All right. Good morning, everyone. Please come to order. Keep the enthusiasm down to a dull roar. Welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Today is May 20th, 2025. This meeting will concern the agenda. It is one of our series of budget study sessions. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members. Asatrian?
Here.
Bratman?
Here.
Carpitian?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Mayor Najarian?
Here. May we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, special meeting of the city council was posted on May 16th, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is item one, Budget Study Session Number Two, Fiscal Year 2025-2026, Citywide Budget and Departmental Presentations, Public Hearing on City Vacancies and Recruitment and Retention Efforts, Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3.
Thank you very much. Before I recognize Mr. Golanyan, I just like everyone to know that I'm gonna set a target of adjournment of this meeting at 11:00. That's a goal. That's aspirational. Obviously, we're not gonna cut anybody off, but just to keep the pace of the meeting going. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor Najarian, Member City Council. Thank you for making the time this morning, at least for the next two hours or so, for Budget Study Session Number Two, which is the second of four planned Budget Study Sessions. Whereas during the first Budget Study Session, we presented a high-level, if you will, overview of the proposed fiscal year 25-26 budget. This morning, we will get an opportunity to delve into more details as it relates to each department's operations and budget. Study Session Number One primarily was an overview of the General Fund. This morning, we'll also cover the rest of the funds. And then we'll have an opportunity for departmental presentations. As such, our GTV crew team have done an excellent job of putting together a video presentation that introduces the departments. And then Mr. Taktalian will cover an overview of each department. Because of the number of departments we have, we have divided them up into four groups. And during the presentation, we asked that if you could hold your questions until the end of that group or segment so that we can direct the questions to those respective departments. With that, before I turn it over to the presentation, I wanted to give a big thank you to the budget team, John Taktalian, Shujun Lee, Karina Cervantes, and Jason Bradford, who have put in an inordinate amount of time preparing this presentation. And the books, the binders that you have seen, contains a significant amount of data. And we will try to make this presentation as streamlined as possible.
With that, Taktalian?
Thank you very much for that. A couple of, a few other names, actually, fitted faces sitting in the front row that I wanted to introduce. A part of the new budget team. I liken it to building a ship while at sea. This group of individuals you see up front essentially came on halfway through our budget season, but have been instrumental in doing a lot of the legwork behind the scenes. We have Linda Musayan sitting in the front. She's our new revenue manager. Audrey Negadakian, Budget Analyst. Jenny Keshishian, also Budget Analyst. And our newest Budget Analyst, along, I think even the last one maybe hired, was Leo Torosian, also Budget Analyst. So without this team, we wouldn't have been able to provide the level of information that we have. They have really done quite a bit of effort, put quite a bit of effort into all of this. Mr. Golanyan talked about what we're gonna be discussing today, so I won't go over that. Can we go to the next slide, please? Maybe hand me a clicker? But I do wanna touch on what we can expect, at least at the next Budget Study Session, which is set for June 4th. At that point, we'll be discussing our Public Benefit Charge Program through GWP in detail. We'll take a deep dive into the Capital Improvement Program, all the different projects that make up that fund. We'll take a deep dive into our fleet operation, as well as the Public Works will provide a presentation on parking fees and a touch on definition of a parking tax. The follow-up meeting on June 12th essentially will be for any follow-ups that arise from today or the following meeting. At some point at the end of today, we will ask for some feedback from council so we can begin planning our next steps to be able to bring information back on the 12th. And our final budget adoption and hearing has been set for June 24th. I wanna start off at a real 30,000-foot view with respect to our proposed citywide budget. As I mentioned at last week's presentation, the city is entirely made up of six individual funds. The total combined sum of each of those funds totals about $1,227 million. The Enterprise Fund essentially is the largest fund, made up of water, electric, sewer, and refuse. And the General Fund is the second largest. You'll see that a significant portion of our total fund budget is comprised of our Internal Service Funds, a small amount in CIP, the Special Revenue Funds, things like grants and the housing programs. And finally, the Debt Service Fund, which we'll talk about more in detail. This is a 30,000-foot view representation. I'm not gonna get into a great level of detail here, but I do want to turn it over to Karina, who will take a deeper dive, probably at the 10,000-foot view, if you will. The real details of each of these will come as I make the departmental budgetary presentations following her presentation here. Go ahead, Karina.
The General Fund is the city's primary operating fund, which supports the broad range of ongoing governmental services. For fiscal year 25-26, the proposed budget is $352.3 million. And as you can see, this is distributed across 12 departments with 67% dedicated to public safety. As you can see, most of the departments within the General Fund have small increases or decreases. This is the result of our budget balancing strategies, primarily the proposed defunding of vacant positions and departmental reductions. Out of the $26.6 million increase, $12.8 million, no, $2.9 million is to the collapse of the Parking Fund. The other variance is in the Transfers category. As we are proposing to cancel the transfers to CIP for $10 million, the transfer to Fleet for $2 million, and the transfer to Building Maintenance for $800,000. The other notable increase is in the estimated vacancy savings. So in fiscal year 24-25, we were anticipating to have vacancy savings of $9.6 million. Since then, we have filled a lot of those positions. So we've gone ahead and reduced the estimated savings from $9.6 million to $2 million. And this will be realized just through normal attrition. Moving on to the Special Revenue Funds, this consists of restricted funds designated for specific purposes. So the budget in these funds depend on the funding received from various granting agencies. For fiscal year 25-26, the proposed budget is $139.7 million. Among these, the largest fund is the Housing Assistance Fund, with a proposed budget of $56.1 million. And this is where the Section 8 Housing Voucher Program resides. As of now, we're assuming full funding for fiscal year 25-26 as we have not received any confirmation of reductions from HUD. Other funds are the Workforce Fund, which accounts for grant funds received for the job training program. We also have the Parking Fund. And as you can see, there is no appropriation for fiscal year 25-26. And this is due to the collapse into the General Fund. We also have the Transit Utility Funds, which accounts for the B-line operations. The other big one is the Fire Mutual Aid Fund. And this is for reimbursement and costs associated with responding to fire incidents outside of the city's jurisdiction. For the Debt Service Fund, this is where we pay the principal and interest payment on the police building, which will be paid off in 2030. Moving on to the Capital Improvement Funds, these funds support the acquisition, construction, and improvement of major capital assets, including infrastructure and facilities. So here, we do see that there's a reduction in the Capital Improvement Fund. And part of that is that we are deferring several projects to 26-27. Another notable decrease is in the CIP Reimbursement Fund. Public Works received a one-time grant in 24-25, which is why we see a decrease of $17.1 million. In the Enterprise Funds, this is where GWP operations for electric and water utilities are housed, with charges for services being the primary revenue source. Within the Enterprise Funds, we also have the sewer and the refuse operations, fire communications, and the fiber optic services. For fiscal year 25-26, the total proposed appropriation is $556.8 million, with 382 in electric and 78 in water. The notable decrease is in the Water Depreciation Fund. So GWP is currently undergoing the Water Master Plan. So once that is complete, they may request additional appropriation for CIP projects. So the budget that we see here of 70, yeah, the budget that we see here for water is the minimum they need for the normal operations for fiscal year 25-26. And finally, we have the Internal Service Funds. These funds provide goods or services to other city funds on a cost-reimbursement basis. And they're intended to be self-supporting. So here, we have the Fleet Management Fund, Joint Air Support Fund, Information Technology, as well as all of fringe benefits for employees, including liability insurance. The notable increases are in liability insurance, and that's mostly due to an increase in excess insurance premiums for 25-26. The other big increase that we have is in the Medical Insurance Fund. We do have an increase of about $4.2 million. And that's primarily due to an increase in premiums and claims expected in 25-26. And that's it.
Thank you, Karina. So that was the 10,000-foot view of all of our individual funds. I see there may be some questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Slide seven, the Urban Art Fund. Can you tell me what our balance in that fund is?
We can. I will caveat, if you guys wanna look that up, I have it here as well. I have to caveat this, however. When we ask about specific balances of any of these funds, it takes a little bit of analysis of each individual fund. Each one of them has a story. So we can tell you what the beginning balance was as of June 2024, because that is fully audited. But there may be commitments, carryovers, or new commitments for future years that haven't necessarily been attributed to it. So we can tell you that the actual balance in that fund as of June 2024 was?
$9.6 million.
$9.6 million, okay. And I just ask, because I know that fund has been kinda growing faster than we're able to spend it. And I've just been kind of, the idea's been circulating in my mind as to how, you know, whether we can get more creative and ways we can deploy that money. So, just an idea. My next one is on slide nine. And I don't have a ton. I just have three questions. The public, why is the Public Benefit Fund down? I would assume our collections are up because it's a fixed percentage of electric billings?
There's a decrease in the Public Benefit Program, but they're gonna go into detail in the next.
Okay, I could wait. I could wait till you do your, if you could just address it when you do your-
Let's just cover it now.
Oh, you wanna, yeah, okay.
Could you repeat the question again, sir?
Well, the question was, I'm seeing a decrease in the Public Benefit Fund budget. Now, I know the inflows into the Public Benefit Fund, I'm presuming they're increasing
Yes.
because of higher electric collections. So why is the PBC?
So we will cover then a great amount of detail when we present the different programs that we're proposing. But I think it has a lot to do with the refinement of the programs. So we need less dollars to implement those programs. It doesn't mean that we have less dollars to put out there. It just means that we're choosing to spend them more wisely. So we're refining the programs to make sure we're getting the most benefit out of them.
Okay. And I think, not today, but you're presenting it-
June 4th.
4th.
I think what you're saying is, it's not that the fund balance is reducing. It's the actual funds being attributed to each individual program and the appropriation that you're seeking for the following year.
Exactly.
Which means we have more money if we wanna-
Yeah, it still has to be allocated to particular programs for PBC, but yes.
Yeah, I know, yeah, okay. And then my last question is, you mentioned slide 11 on the Capital Improvement Fund. You said deferring several projects. Can you tell us what projects are being deferred?
We will be getting into that level of detail when we're talking about the infrastructure piece and Public Works. So if I can ask that, you maybe hold on to that question.
As long as we cover it.
Yeah, if we don't answer it in that particular slide, that'll give us enough time for the department to go in and do a little bit of digging over the next 15 minutes.
Fair enough. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned that there was, you collapsed the Parking Fund. Can you please explain that in language we can all understand and what that means?
So the Parking Fund, once we looked in detail, it wasn't self-sustaining. So we had to collapse it into the Parking Fund, which means that we dissolved the fund and we moved operations into Police and Public Works within the General Fund.
Okay, what happens?
Yeah, Councilmember Kasakian, if I can add to that. So the Parking Fund used to be standalone, separate from the General Fund. In conversations with our Police Department and Public Works and Parking Management folks, what Karina was referring to was the Parking Enforcement function that was housed in Public Works will be moved to the Police Department since they currently, anyway, or previously, were doing some enforcement. So now this will be consolidated under one roof, one department.
Sure. And what does that mean financially for the city in terms of actual dollars?
As far as-
Is the money just moving around? And it's moving from one type of fund to-
Correct.
But there's no increase or decrease? And is our third-party vendors that we're working with, are they still on contract, continue to working with the city?
The third-party vendor is in transition. Once we are fully staffed in the Police Department that can take over this function, we are transitioning them out over the next few months. They'll be completely out of the picture, and the Police Department will take over that function.
All right.
So now-
And refresh my memory, was this something that was run by City Council before? Or was it an internal decision?
It was an internal decision. We have been contemplating, actually, moving the Parking Fund into the General Fund for at least while I've been here as a city manager. And this was, the timing was just right, considering the transition from the private vendor to internal enforcement of the parking.
Well, given some of the concerns and complaints that I've received from the public, I'm not entirely against bringing it back in-house to provide better quality of service. However, it would have been, I think, good for City Council since we made that initial decision. I believe we're the ones who went out. It was approved by council to go out for a request for proposals. There was vendors that were brought forth and was voted on here in these chambers. It would have been nice to know that we're now reversing that decision to go back to a different way of doing things.
If I can add some color to all of that. The collapsing of the Parking Fund into the General Fund is separate and apart from that portion of what we're talking about. The reason why you collapsed, we collapsed a fund into the General Fund is because that fund was operating in a negative for year after year after year. When a Special Revenue Fund continues to operate in a negative, at some point, the General Fund essentially is a stopgap. This General Fund is gonna go in to make up that difference. So when the fund clearly can't sustain itself from an auditing perspective, you have to take action.
Was there time, Mr. Taktalian, when it wasn't operating in the red?
Not over the last four or five years that we've viewed, maybe even a little bit longer.
I guess my question is, and I think anyone else would be asking a similar question, what changed for it to go from operating in the black, if we're gonna use those terms, to going into the red?
I don't know that it's ever really operated in the black. And the way that it operates in the black is essentially if you defer maintenance of your capital projects, which is essentially the way that we've limped by over the years. We've only basically been able to budget and take on projects that we had the cash for, not necessarily for the projects that we had to do to maintain our parking structures and our parking lots.
All right, thanks. I want the labor-
And as far as Parking Enforcement Contract is concerned, we did, we were promised. And when council approved the recommendation to award the contract, the estimates that we had gotten, this vendor hasn't been able to achieve, quite frankly. So that's part of the reason for the reduction.
Good lesson learned, I suppose. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and that's perhaps the irony, because a lot of the complaints we get is from over-aggressive parking enforcement. And despite that, they're still below break even. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Asatrian?
The sheet you had sent over had a category for, under General Fund, that said non-departmental.
Yes.
But I'm not seeing that here in your presentation.
Non-departmental will reside in the Finance Department. And the reason why we have a non-departmental was solely for the purpose of doing what I'm about to talk about in the following slides. Essentially, we have made a decision to defund a number of vacant positions that had been vacant for an extended period of time as part of the means to balance, at least reduce the budget burden, from $34 million down to the $13.7 that we're at today. So in order to account for those positions, they were removed from department budgets, defunded, so the total budget number came down. But the headcounts, the FTE headcount, was set aside in a non-departmental. The city manager, at some point, assuming that there is funding in place, would be able to release that position back to a department or another department, quite frankly, across the organization, as long as there's an appropriation in place. So those are, that non-departmental was essentially set up to, as a holding account, if you will, just for positions, without funding.
Okay, so where is that here in your slides?
We don't go into that level of detail in these particular slides.
You have an, so you have an account here. It's the overview one. It's not the detailed one that you had provided.
I would have to go back and take a look.
I'm just trying to understand where you collapsed that, so.
I understand the question. If you would allow, let me move on from this portion of the presentation. But in the meantime, I'm gonna ask Karina and Shujun to take a look to see if we can come up with a more concise answer and point you directly to the big document that's in front of you that was provided last week and show you where it would be.
If you want, I can pass this on to the staff for them to take a look at it. And then the SP plus contract, the parking contract?
Yes.
How much were we losing out on that? Do we have an answer? How much was it costing us?
I believe the annual loss was roughly about $1 million, which is frankly equivalent to what the court fees were when you take into account the administrative fee that's associated with every parking citation. So in order for that contract to have actually turned a, I don't wanna say a profit, but to turn block into the block, a positive return, they would have had to write, you know, three to four times more citations to overcome the administrative fee that essentially goes across the street.
And I think when I had asked for the numbers, there was some 120,000 tickets that they had written last year, which is-
115-ish, yeah.
Yeah, I did, so. Okay, I'll just let you continue and then-
One question, John, quickly. What is the Police Fund on page nine?
Page nine, Police Fund.
Like a $1.2 million?
Karina, would you like to take that one?
It's Fund 2610.
Karina? Fund 2610 for Police?
Grant funds that the Police Department receives. So they have some settlement money from the National Opial Settlement. They have from the Glendale Police Foundation. There are task force grants.
Great, thank you. Mr. Carpitian?
Yeah, thank you. That was one of my questions, comparing page six to nine. Summary of Appropriations on page nine and Summary of Appropriations, General Fund, on page six. So Mayor Najarian asked the Police Fund, but how about the Library? On page six, Library Arts and Culture, it says decrease of $372. Is it millions, right?
Yeah, no, that's 372,000.
Thousand, okay. So, and on page nine, it says 359,000. What is the, that's one of the questions. With the Police Fund the same, it's 22,000 on page nine and-
So that's a coincidence. The Library Fund is a separate fund from the General Fund. So the General Fund essentially is one fund type. Then you have Special Revenue Funds. So the general fund essentially is one fund type, then you have special revenue funds, and underneath the special revenue fund is the library fund. So the library fund has nothing to do with the general fund component of it, it's just a coincidence that the numbers are so close to one another.
Okay, so, thank you. Page 11, we had a $17 million of CIP reimbursement, line 4090. So this year, we had no CIP reimbursements so far, or you may have some?
So we'll get into that when I get into the public works slides, where I'll have a lot more detail to share with you, but with this, yes.
Page 12, can you explain the electric depreciation, electric and water depreciation fund? Are we getting into it in the next slides? I can wait if you have to.
I would ask that if we can, let's wait until we get into the departments. Each of these that are attributable to a department will show up under theirs, and at that point, we'll have an opportunity to have the department heads get up and speak specifically to those funds. Like I said, each one has a story in and of itself, and I can probably scratch the surface on most of this, but I don't want to lead us down a path where I'm not answering your question directly.
Let's add to that list the fleet management fund?
Yes.
And also, page 14, medical insurance fund?
Absolutely. I'm definitely going to speak about the medical insurance, and for the fleet management, we're going to get into a very detailed conversation on that on June 4th, but we can definitely touch on that again today.
I'll wait.
Thank you.
Carry on, John.
Thank you very much. So for the next segment of our presentation, we've essentially broken it down into four sections. Each section will start off with a video presentation of the individual departments that represent, that fall within it, and then I'll get into a deeper conversation with respect to each department's profile, any service level increases, any budget, proposed budget reductions to help balance the budget, as well as the individual funds that I'll talk about with respect to the variances. The four sections we're about to get into are broken into quality of life, so that'll, I'm sorry, the first one will be public safety, so police and fire, go down to infrastructure, that'll be GWP and public works, quality of life, handful of departments there, followed by all the central support departments.
And John, it's your request earlier when we spoke that we listened to the video, listened to the presentation, and hit questions at the end of that?
If possible.
Segmental presentation.
Yes, I'll try to breeze through my portion to allow enough time for questions and answers. That way, we're not constantly having department heads come up and down, we can have the fire chief get up and answer any questions, followed by the police chief.
Okay.
If I can ask the city clerk to play the public safety piece first.
Glendale's budget is more than numbers. It reflects the services and priorities that keep our city moving. Each department contributes, from public safety and infrastructure, to parks, to libraries, and clean water. In the next segments, you'll hear highlights of their accomplishments and upcoming year's focus, showing how the budget supports the work that helps Glendale thrive. Let's take a closer look. The Glendale Fire Department, GFD, is dedicated to protecting the lives, property, and well-being of the community. Classified as an ISO Class 1 fire department operating from nine fire stations, the GFD provides services including fire suppression, emergency medical services, technical rescues, and hazardous materials response. GFD is supported by multiple funds. The general fund, special revenue funds, support the household hazardous waste program and fire prevention efforts. Capital improvement funds, long-term infrastructure needs, and the enterprise fund supports the Verdugo Fire Communications Center. This year, GFD renovated its training tower and welcomed 26 new ambulance operators and six lateral firefighter paramedics, launched the drone program to enhance situational awareness during emergency incidents. Fire prevention efforts focused on inspections, education, and hazard mitigation. While the EMS division received top marks in its annual audit, GFD responded to emergencies, including the Palisades and Eaton fires, with the Verdugo Fire Communications Center playing a critical role during January's severe windstorms. The department expanded its wellness program to include cancer screenings in response to ongoing exposure to carcinogens. GFD also partnered with Pasadena Fire to launch the first-ever women's academy, advancing diversity and recruitment. Next year, the department will continue to focus on recruitment and retention. Technological integration will remain a priority, with new tools and programs to enhance incident response and operational efficiency. The Fire Prevention Bureau will broaden its outreach, responding to increasing fire risk concerns. The Glendale Fire Department remains steadfast in its mission to serve with excellence, adaptability, and care. The Glendale Police Department is committed to ensuring public safety through proactive law enforcement, innovative crime prevention, leveraging technology, and community collaboration. The police department is primarily supported through the general fund. This past year, the department purchased a new helicopter to enhance response capabilities. The newly-launched real-time intelligence center, ARTIC, harnesses cutting-edge technology to provide real-time, actionable intelligence to first responders and support ongoing investigations. Traffic safety also remained a priority, with motorcycle officers and street racing task force conducting targeted enforcement efforts that led to multiple arrests. And for the first time in years, GPD achieved full staffing of sworn personnel, assembling a diverse and highly-skilled team committed to crime prevention and community engagement. Looking ahead, the police department is focused the safe initiative that will add 23 new police officers to meet the growing safety needs and expand the ARTIC, focusing on strengthening partnerships and increasing the network of security cameras through private collaboration. The Glendale Police Department remains committed to safety, innovation, proactive policing, and emergency preparedness.
Okay, so that was an introduction to each of those two departments, what it is they do, what they accomplished this year, and what we're setting out to accomplish next year with the budgets that have essentially been proposed. Moving forward, this thing isn't working. There we go. Moving forward, this particular slide you'll see repeated for each and every department. This is the profile slide I was referring to. Quick introduction of what we're looking at here, in the upper left-hand column represents the different sections within the department. Fire department has eight sections associated with it. In the upper center to right side, you have the profile of the department staffing-wise. What we've done is we've actually done a comparison between fiscal year '24, '25, as well as fiscal year '25, '26 proposed. What you see in the middle is essentially changes that occurred during the year, as well as some of the strategies in the third column representing the strategies we've implemented for budget balancing. Perhaps the best way to really view this section would be to compare the first column, '24, '25, with the last column, '25, '26. That'll give you a full, accurate representation of where the department started, where we're proposing them to be. Specific to the public safety slides, police and fire, you'll see three columns, one for sworn, one for non-sworn, and then full-time employees. For all the other departments, you'll just see two, one for hourly leave and one for salaried. Lower left-hand side, proposed service level adjustments. If there are any proposed increases to a department budget, it'll show specifically here. These are new items above and beyond anything that the department does on an annual basis. In this case, the fire department has two requests for capital. The first is 35 turnouts. This is the protective gear that firefighters wear while fighting fires. We obviously have more than 35 firefighters, but what we do based on the cost is we split these purchases out over a longer period of time to align with when the uniforms and the protective gear essentially expires. That way, everybody is within OSHA compliance and safety. The other item for $90,000 is two Zolex monitors, X-series monitors. These essentially are the defibrillators that are used within the fire department. Under our proposed '25, '26 budget balancing strategies, lower right-hand column, you'll see two columns in all the department slides. On the left will be anything associated with salaries and benefits reductions, on the right will be maintenance and operation cuts. With respect to salaries and benefits, the fire department, within the fire department, there was one vacant fire prevention inspector position that was removed and unfunded, and it resides in that non-departmental account that we'll talk about in a little bit and answer councilmember Sotirian's question on. On the MNO side, there were a number of proposed reductions within the department put forward by the fire chief. The first one was the cancer screening that we started doing last year. This is not an elimination of the program, it's essentially turning it from an annual to an every-other-year program that would be in alignment with other agencies and best practices. Verdugo Tri-City Payment Reduction of about $167,000. This is directly related back to our Verdugo Dispatch operation, and that $167,000 reduction is an agreement that would benefit not just Glendale, but Burbank and Pasadena as well, since we're all partners in that operation. There was some nominal decreases in furniture and equipment at MNO to help offset some of our budget woes, and the flat stipend of $200,000. That is a consistent theme you will see in all the slides for every department, is that flat stipend. Because our budgets over the last few years have essentially been carryovers, and we haven't entertained new service level increases, we had decided to provide departments with a flat amount each year to do with what they will, as opposed to ask for a service level increase. Smaller departments with smaller budgets got 50,000, some got 150,000, some got 200,000 if they had a very large budget, mainly police and fire. This particular department operates under, within six funds. I will not be going down the rabbit hole on every one of these funds in the interest of time. We can answer questions if there's anything I don't cover, but I will touch on some of the major variances. So for fire, general fund, you see a $2.4 million increase from year to year. That's primarily attributable to about $2.1 million in salaries and benefits, and a decrease of about $456,000 on their MNO side. There was also in that number that $96,000 increase for the capital outlay, for the turnouts, and the monitors. The fire grant fund, you see that there is a $281,000 increase. That's essentially a $281,000 UAW grant that the department gets on an annual basis. This is an item that in previous years, we've come back to council mid-year to appropriate. It is a consistent grant that we get each year, so this year, we're just cutting to the chase and asking for the appropriation upfront, knowing that it'll come through. On the mutual aid fund, you see an increase of about $1.175 million, or 134, 133% increase. That is entirely due to the fact that we anticipate a greater amount of overtime expenses, as well as, I'm sorry, yeah, it's overtime and travel expenses associated with callouts of our firefighters to fight fires across the state via mutual aid. And in the capital improvement fund, you see a decrease of $1.15 million. That's essentially because last year, we had asked for that funding for a set of projects. We're not asking for any additional funding this year. Any funding remaining from last year will carry over until those projects are complete. That is a quick representation of the fire department and what I intend to do for all the other departments. Moving on to police, identical layout, they operate under five different sections. You'll notice that they started the year, last year, with 374, almost 375 total personnel. That's now up to 407 based on two factors, the 23 officers, which is actually 22 officers right now, based on one of the budget balancing strategies associated with Project 300. And then there was the collapse of the parking fund, which we already discussed earlier today, that brought over a number of people from the parking fund into the police fund, the police general fund. In terms of service level increases, I talked about this in detail at our first budget study session, there is two asks totaling about $4.9 million. The first is for overtime, and the next is for MNO. Both are directly tied back to the fact that the department is fully funded for once in the last couple decades or more. In previous years, we were able to get by without asking for additional overtime appropriations because we were relying on vacant positions to fund any overtime usage. Now that department is fully staffed, we don't have that ability to offset our overtime use. So essentially, we have to account for the reality of the overtime that we're using. The reality is, I think the department had about a $4 million budget, was in some years upwards of $10 or $12 million in actual overtime usage. The chief has committed to bring that overtime usage down to closer to $8 million, which accounts for that difference of 3.9 that we're asking for. It's about $4 million. Same with the MNO, it's just for the contracts and such. In terms of proposed budget balancing strategies, there were a number of vacant positions that are in that non-departmental account that we talked about again earlier. One senior crime analyst, a communications manager, then ARTIC supervisor, and a vacant police officer position that did not have any recruitments associated with it. On the MNO side, the department was able to put up about $60,000 in DNA-related savings or deferrals, about $10,000 in MNO, and the flat stipend of $200,000, similar to the fire department. I'll touch on three of the funds here in police department. The first is the general fund, that's the big one on the screen, you see $24 million increase year over year. Of the $24 million increase, 17 million of it is directly attributable to salaries and benefits. $6 million associated with COLAs, and I only call out the COLAs for the department because it is a large department. It's not that their COLAs were significantly larger than other bargaining groups, but just based on the sheer number of employees and the salaries that they get charged against, it does have a significant impact of about $6 million. Another component of that 17 million was about $5.8 million associated with the police officers for Project 300, 3.9 million in overtime that I just explained, and about $1.4 million for the 10 and 1/2 positions that transferred over from the parking fund. There's also some increases on the MNO side, 3 million of which were associated with the collapse of the parking fund. I'll just take a quick pause and say, just remember that when we say there's an increase in the general fund of $3.7 million, or $3 million for the parking fund, there is a commensurate decrease in what used to be the parking fund. So this isn't necessarily new money, it's money shifting around. And then the department had about $3.3 million in nondiscretionary that they don't have control over, things like IT service charge, liability, maintenance, building maintenance charge and such. Fund 2600, asset forfeiture, you see a $650,000 increase there. This is a fund that fluctuates on an annual basis, just based on the assets that are actually forfeited in any given year and any projects that we may have that are qualified to use the funds associated with it. Funds in this particular account are limited in terms of what they could be used for. So what we see here of the 650, there's a lot of ins and outs, but the two primaries are about half a million dollars in contractual services directly associated with the real-time intelligence center, the purchase of software for that operation, and about $350,000 in capital outlay directly associated with our mobile command unit. The last fund I'll talk about in this, in the police department, is a joint air support fund. You see a reduction of about $124,000. Again, there's some increases, there's some decreases going on behind the scenes, but the primary drivers or variables that are driving that essentially is $380,000 in maintenance decreases or savings, just based on the fact that we had a pretty significant overhaul of one of the engines, which means we're not going to necessarily have the repairs that we anticipated in the future year. There was about $120,000 increase to equipment associated with the new helicopter that we're planning on taking, delivery of in October of 2025. And the last item is about, it's an increase of about $70,000 in fuel expenses associated with not only the increased cost of fuel for this particular helicopter that we're taking ownership of, but also the extended increased flight time that we anticipate. I know I'm talking fast, it's to try to get us out of here within that two hours.
I don't mind, we're not complaining. Go for it, you're on a roll.
Okay, that's where I'm going to take a pause, and open it up to any questions before we go into our infrastructure piece.
Councilmember Sotirian, and then councilmember Brockman.
I'll go last, because I went for a question.
Okay. Can I have the fire chief first? Hello? All right. The cancer screenings?
Yes.
Going from annual to every two years. Can you speak to that? Because I think for me at least, you know, we made a commitment and a promise to our firefighters, and especially coming off a year where we saw the windstorms and the LA fires. Are you trying to regroup, or, you know, is this standard?
Yeah, councilmember Sotirian, one of the things, we've continued to do research on what the best practices are in the industry. Gallery is one screening. After the fires, there's a group out of the University of Arizona that offered a screening to all LA-area fire agencies. We had limited personnel participate in that. The goal is, is we look at going to a biannual, would be that off-year of doing something like that University of Arizona study, which is a little bit more comprehensive, and they also set a baseline and monitor continuously.
Okay, so we're not looking to do away with it for next year, right? We're just gonna...
We're just looking at other avenues.
Next year's budget, it'll be part of the conversation again?
Councilmember Sotirian, it will be included in next year's budget, yes.
Okay.
Every other year, it'll be in the budget.
The fire prevention inspector position, that's something we always hear complaints about, folks waiting for the inspectors to come through. I know that there were discussions between Mr. Calvert, Fire Department, and GWP about streamlining that process. I have concerns about getting rid of an inspector position when we continuously hear that complaint. So why that position?
Yeah, so one, that was a position that was vacant for an extended period of time since July of last year. One of the things since my time in the interim seat that I've asked staff to do is some realignment that we've done on the management side, is do a workload analysis of every section of the fire department, one being a priority focus is fire prevention. So although we're just now seeing the changes with the CAL FIRE mapping, probably within the next few months, we'll have a solid idea of what the future needs to look like for that section, and that's when we plan to readdress that.
So if we do approve cutting this position, what would be the process? So you go through your process and you figure out, wait, I do need it. What's the process for that?
So councilmember Sotirian, member of the city council, not just with the fire department, as you see, as we progress through the presentation, the majority, vast majority, I should say, with the exception of one department, have given up at least one position. The process in the future, they will, every department, if there is a restructuring to be done or research as to what's the most efficient way of handling that operation, then they will come to me with a justification. We will have to find out whether there is appropriation associated with that, the cost of that position, and gets approved, and then it will become part of the, it will be added back to the budget.
Okay. I'm going to hold the rest, thank you. And then if I... And then if I can have the police chief.
Good morning.
Good morning. The joint air support account. Can you speak to the contract that we have or the agreement we have? Because I remember when I came out, you guys were talking about who takes on what. How do we split the admin?
Duties. Yeah, so as it relates to our air support program, it is a program that we partner with the city of Burbank with. The administration of the program and its oversight is handled by the Glendale Police Department, as far as I know, always has. Whether it's our administration and our finance staff, all the way through to the supervision and management of the program from the sworn side is handled by Glendale PD. That said, all costs associated with the program outside of its staffing are forwarded by Glendale PD and then reimbursed by Burbank PD at 50% of whatever the cost is.
And then is there an opportunity for us to revisit that along with any other? I know that we had talked about the PD radio wireless fund as well. We do the admin work, but we don't, you know, there's no split costs with the other cities that are benefiting from it.
It's certainly something we could take a look at and revisit it with our partners in Burbank and see what their appetite is for that. It's my understanding that this has been the structure and the MOU that's been in place for, I think, a couple of decades now at this point. So not to say we can't take a look at it and see if there's a willingness to, you know, find a, divvy it up in a more equitable way. But this is, you know, I think what's been the practice and what's been working for, like I said, a couple of decades.
Okay. And then the four positions that you're, you have listed for... Can you speak to the Arctic versus the crime analyst?
So those are going to both be real-time intelligence center or Arctic positions. One was a supervisor position, what I will call a working supervisor position, someone who's going to have supervisory responsibilities as well as some of the more line-level duties of everything from monitoring cameras as well as managing contracts in there and working on growing the program particularly with the private sector in our community. The position that's classified as a crime analyst, it was previously a crime analyst. We were in the process of reclassifying that to an Arctic position, to an Arctic specialist. And again, that'd be an analyst working in that room primarily on the investigative side, working hand-in-hand with our investigators when it comes to solving crime and utilizing the room for the purposes of doing investigations. The unfunding of those two positions doesn't change its current construct and the work that we're doing now, but it would, you know, require us to kind of just understand that we'll have to temper our expectations of the growth of that room moving forward.
Okay, and then the DNA lab 60K. What is, what is that?
In just...
Getting rid of...
Yeah, and looking at balancing strategies, sat down with our folks in the DNA lab and tried to find places where we could, you know, shave some M and O costs. And that was one that was identified by the lab director and staff in not necessarily being a priority or needed at this point.
Okay. I think lastly, this is more for my colleagues. I've been asking about our contract with Pasadena Humane Society for quite some time now. We're paying roughly, I think, $2 million or some a year?
A million, about a million, about a million.
So when I asked about how many animals they're servicing, they got 1982 calls just last year. Everyone knows how much I love Pasadena Humane, this isn't about that. This is really looking at, you know, what we're paying for and what we're getting in return. One of my biggest concerns with that contract has also been that whether it has to do with adoptions or them being out in the Glendale community and doing events here, it feels like the answer is almost always no. That's what I've gotten when I've tried to connect them. I would love for us to see about looking at that contract and how we can save money there because I think that that is a lot of money to be paying for 1,900 phone calls. And I don't know what that looks like, I don't know what we had before. But this is something I would love for you to explore and take a look at as a, you know, money-saving measure. I think just off the, I know there's the four positions, I'm going to say this now. Anything related to cutting staffing for public safety, I'm not going to be okay with in this budget. So there's a lot of contracts we can look at. But I think public safety and permitting are going to be my two, just overarching. I'm not okay with getting rid of officers that we're going to have. The communications manager position, I've actually seen an incredible decrease in the social media and the PD in the recent months. You know, I keep talking about this over and over again. When you leave a void, somebody else comes in and fills that void when it comes to communication and outreach. And I don't want that touched when it comes to our public safety. So I'm gonna leave it at that.
Yes, a couple of quick questions. Mostly on the personnel, I want to understand this correctly, Chief, since you're here. What is our current number of police officers, 397 total?
So in this proposed budget going forward, allocated would be 270. And that includes 22 additional officers from the Project 300 initiative, that's phase one.
Right, now I was looking at the total number of full-time, part-time, sworn officers, non-s sworn officers and hourly FTEs. So right now, I just want to understand, is it 397 total today and we're going to 407?
It is...
I'm at page 18.
That is correct.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. Because this number is kind of, you know, I know you guys know and it says .93, I don't know how do we calculate that, but it's fine.
I think that accounts for the hourly employees.
Okay, so currently we have 397, .93 in total number of employees, police officers and hourly's. And we're going to 407. Okay, thank you. Because I was looking at the fire department, they are kind of 257, 49. They're going down to 256, so they're one less personnel in.
And I think that as the assistant CM touched on, that jump is largely represented as we touched on Project 300 and then the staff for the parking program that we took on from the Public Works Fund.
Yes, yes, thank you. So one last question was the fire mutual aid fund. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
From one chief to another.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you just explain that to me? Is it, is it $2,560,000?
Yes, the fire mutual aid fund is the reimbursements we get from the state or the federal government when we send resources throughout the state.
So this is a reimbursement that we receive, that was my question. So we receive that money back. Okay, thank you, chief.
Mr. Brockman.
Okay, you guys are going to keep coming up and back and might as well just, since you're not in your seat, I'll take fire first. And I, I don't have much, but let's see. So one question I had in my mind is the take-home vehicle program. What do we spend on that? Is that part of the MOU? Do you know?
I'd have to pull the numbers, the data, we can definitely get back to you on that as far as what that total number is. But again, as we have incidents in the city, there are positions that are dedicated that have a responsibility to respond back to the city in those emergencies. As we've seen with, you know, I'll use structure fires or large brush fires or anything else, our folks need to be able to respond expediently back into the city and it's always been tied to that.
Is that baked into our MOUs?
It's not in the MOU as far as a take-home vehicle that I recall anywhere in the MOU, but it has been a standard practice across for the entire time I've been part of the organization. Obviously something we evaluate every year, there is an assessment by fleet on that and we quantify that, but that always has been a standard practice.
Somebody could get back to me on what we spend on that.
We will.
The vehicles and the, I guess it would be like vehicle wear and tear and the fuel, I don't know how you...
Certainly, we can, we can do that and quite the coincidence, but we just completed an internal audit of our take-home vehicle program. So we will just build upon that, that base. It's going to be released very shortly.
Okay. The other question I have is, what's the situation with overtime in your department?
So obviously overtime, our biggest contributor to overtime is constant staffing. As you know, a fire engine is staffed with four people, if one of those people take off, we have to refill that to meet NFPA standards, et cetera. So that's the number one. So with associated leave of sick, vacation, et cetera, that folks use, that's the general number one contributor. Overtime beyond that, one of the things we've been looking at since my time here is non-discretionary overtime and other areas where we can reduce. We're doing a pretty good job on that of, again, whether it's training or anything else that we can do on duty and send companies through that way, really trying to minimize that. I mean, you know, in all the years I've been in the department, it's obviously a constant issue that we're evaluating. It's something that we're constantly aware of and we're trying to do our best to mitigate any further increases.
Okay, do we have the numbers for that? You gave the numbers for police overtime.
We, I gave the numbers for police overtime in terms of an increase. The actual overtime, it would be in the proposed budget, we can get that for you, it'll just take a second to dig up.
Both for me, then I don't need to keep you up here. Thanks. And then she said, so what's the status with our new hires? I think we have, like, we still have some people in the academy, what's going on with that?
Yeah, so as of today, up to the minute, so we talked about the 270 allocated positions we have. We have 260, 260, filled as of today. Keeping in mind that there's about 10 of those that are representative of that 260, they're currently in the police academy right now. Those last 10 currently vacant positions, we are in processes, different stages of background processes with probably about a dozen applicants, the majority of which are lateral police officers coming from other agencies to join ours. So it's conceivably over the next couple of months, that 270 is going to be filled once we get through background processes and get some of our young folks to the police academy. So from a sworn standpoint, we're doing really, really well. From a non-s sworn standpoint, we've come a long way with our dispatch center. About a year ago, our dispatch vacancy was about 50%. As of today, it's down to about four or five positions and we currently have folks in the process for those as well. And then a few other just scattered vacancies. We've got to get some PSO, police service officer positions filled so that we can get this parking program completely transitioned and up and fully functioning. And then a few vacancies that we have in the custody facility with custody officers. But compared to...
Okay, sorry, of the 23 that we authorized, how many of those 23 are, we still, we haven't put the badge on yet, they're still in the, in the process?
Got it, yeah, so with the 23 from phase one, which is now 22, about half of those have already been filled and there's somebody, you know, employed by the city of Glendale for half of those positions and the other half are in the process now in some point of the recruitment and/or background.
Okay, but some potentially could, could fall through if they don't pass background, they don't come out of the academy.
Of course.
Is that typically, is that, do you expect like, like what ratio do you normally...
Particularly with laterals, which are usually stronger candidates or, you know, current employees at another organization, I would suspect that the majority of the folks we have in the back, in the process right now, I expect to get through. There could be one or two that fall out. We have a really strong history with the folks that we send to the police academy. Not only are they getting through, they're typically graduating the top of the class as we just saw a couple of weeks ago. So I'm expecting, while there could be a person or two that falls through, either backgrounds are in the academy, I'm expecting the majority of those folks to get through.
Okay, let us know, I mean, look, I, you know, approved the 23 as we all did and we all want more. But, you know, given what we're facing in the budget, I think we got a little bit ahead of our skis, as they say. If you have people that don't, don't get through the process, I would like to be able to know that maybe we take a pause, just, you know, given what we're facing.
Understood, understood. You know, the only I will just put out there is, and completely understand the comments and I think that's something that the CM and I have talked about and are looking at, it is a part of this entire strategy. But when it comes to hiring staff, and I would say more so for sworn staff, with the support of this council and a lot of the work that staff has done at the police department, the amount of momentum that we have created and the success that we've had with it is pretty unique. Not most police agencies around the region are experiencing that success. And if we get to a place where, you know, that's what the circumstances dictate and we have to kind of throttle it down or shut it down, just understand that when that time comes to kind of fire back up, that it's not as simple as turning on a switch. We will lose a lot of the momentum that we have built. We have very much kind of, you know, we've hit a stride with, particularly with lateral employees wanting to come from other organizations and join ours, so that's certainly something to be valued. But again, understand your comments and understand the situation we're in and point taken.
Okay, I would like, like to know if that happens. And then of the 27, 270, once you have, once you have all the 270 onboard, what, how many do we have dedicated traffic enforcement? How many do we have, maybe not dedicated, but out on patrol?
So once we get to that number of 270, allocated would be 27 officers assigned to the traffic bureau that their primary and sole duties are to go out and do traffic enforcement, traffic collision investigations, traffic safety. With patrol, once we get up to that 270, the number would be 114 officers plus another 18 police sergeants, 19 police sergeants just assigned to just patrol, patrolling the streets of Glendale in one of our five, you know, districts or beats.
Okay, and what's the increase with that 23? What did we, what did we pick up?
Yes, so of that 23, the majority of them were assigned to patrol, about a dozen of them were assigned to patrol. Then there was another, I believe it was six or seven that were assigned to the traffic bureau. We grew our SRO program, once we get to that 270, it would be now four SROs. I think that accounted for the chunk of the 23 positions at the time.
Okay. And then I have the same question about the take-home vehicle program.
So that is something that at the police department, I know that when I first joined the organization about two and a half years ago, within my first few months, we took a hard look at and really, we eliminated some take-home vehicles and really leaned that out. I will tell you that as of today at the police department, any staff that have take-home vehicles are either MOU-related or an operational necessity from an emergency response standpoint, on-call detectives, something of that nature. But we do have a fair amount that are MOU-related, that, that take-home vehicles associated with the MOU.
Okay, if I could get those, those numbers too. And then I think my last one, what did I have? Oh, yeah, on the, on the, the parking enforcement, so do we actually lose money on every single citation we issue? Or like, like the marginal impact of each citation is negative? Or is it, we still have positive return on each citation, it's just the overall cost of running the parking structures?
Yeah, I think to answer your question, when we, when we issued the citation, there's definitely a, you know, a positive cash flow, if you will. But when you start to look at it more holistically with staff, contracts, software on the backend, that's where I think, to the assistant CM's point, in years past, we've been in the red, for lack of better terms. But I think with the reduction of, you know, an eventual elimination of the SP plus contract and taking this back in-house, while from a police department standpoint, we are not looking to be revenue generating, our focus is always going to be a good service and good discretion to enforcement, I think we could expect that in the future, we could be at a place that at the very least, we are cost neutral.
Okay, I'm getting it, like fixed cost, variable costs. So the variable costs of issuing citations are still, they're not putting us further in the red the more we issue citations?
No, no.
Like a strategy wouldn't be to issue fewer citations?
No, no, not for that example.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Mr. Kassakian has a follow-up.
Okay.
I know we have a lot still to go through, so I don't want to ask too many questions, but given that our police department and our fire department are the largest part of our budget, I'll probably ask this now rather than wait. Chief, you had mentioned that you were in the process of hiring some civilian employees. May have been during last year's budget, but to alleviate some of the work required by your officers when they're on-site, when there's a vehicular accident and police are called in to the site, probably for insurance purposes to fill out a report. How, where do you stand with that process? How does this budget that you're proposing impact that? And how will that impact any overtime costs that you have if you're still moving forward with it? with it?
Councilor Kasakian, I appreciate the question. It's a really good question. So with the taking on of the parking enforcement duties, those previous five positions, which were police service officers, PSOs, are going to be joined with the PSO positions that we are taking on from the Parking Fund and joining our organization to create a parking program. So those positions are going to be focused now on parking enforcement and all the duties that surround that. They will no longer be in a position that they can supplement per se patrol as originally intended. We are using that as a way to offset and take on this duty. Again, I think in the grand scheme, I think holistically, add a savings to the city at the elimination eventually of that SP-plus contract, and basically taking on those duties with existing city staff and not having to add any city staff. So I think that in there is where there could be savings for the city.
So we will not be able to support the police, the police officers will still be responding to incidents because we'll be redirecting the staff that was initially intended for that for parking enforcement?
That is correct.
And will that impact, do you see that having an impact on overtime? Will you still be able to bring down overtime within the department without that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I do not see it impacting overtime. And as the Assistant CM touched on, while the $4, $4.5 million that had been allocated for the department in the way of overtime was woefully low and not commensurate with the size of the department, it is absolutely my commitment with this kind of rightsizing of our overtime budget to meet that mark of around $8 million. And we, with the increased staff, you know, as we're able to fill all these positions, it's absolutely my expectation that we're going to drive down that overtime number and stay in and around our budget, our allocated budget.
Thank you, Chief Sid. Thank you, Mayor.
Sir. Carry on, Mr. Tuttatalia.
Play that video.
Well, water and power, GWP provides safe, reliable, and sustainable water and electric services. GWP is funded through electric and water funds, the Public Benefits Fund, and the Fiber Optic Fund. Key accomplishments this past year include rooftop solar panel installation on the Perkins Building and major progress on the Shoal Biogas Project, which will convert landfill gas to renewable energy. At the Grayson Repowering Project, old boiler units were removed, seismic improvements made, and construction began on new power infrastructure. In the year ahead, GWP will complete the Shoal and Grayson Projects, expand solar installations to three more sites, and launch solar Phase Two for up to nine city locations. Additional projects include replacing 33,000 aging water meters, upgrading the UOC warehouse roof, and modernizing the city's phone and contact systems. Through infrastructure investments and clean energy initiatives, GWP continues to build a more sustainable and resilient Glendale. The Public Works Department is made up of six divisions: Administration, Fleet Services, Integrated Waste, Maintenance, Facilities, and Engineering, all working to maintain Glendale's infrastructure, from streets and sewers to traffic signals, parks, and city buildings. Public Works utilizes a range of funding sources: the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund for Transit Programs, and Capital Improvement Projects. The Internal Service Fund supports fleet operations and facilities management, while the Enterprise Fund covers sewer and refuse services. Last year, Public Works completed 11 capital improvement projects, including the San Fernando Road beautification, Palmer Avenue and Green Street rehabilitation, and the citywide cart replacement project, upgrading over 90,000 waste carts to meet SB 1383 requirements. Projects featured drought-tolerant landscaping, bike lanes, and improved accessibility. The department also supported major facility upgrades, including the Police Real-Time Intelligence Center and the Central Library youth spaces. Next year, Public Works will focus on mobility and infrastructure upgrades, including improvements to the Glendale Transportation Center to enhance security and meet ADA standards. The city will replace qualifying fleet vehicles with zero emission models. As part of California's AB 645 pilot, Glendale will implement automated speed cameras in high collision areas to reduce speeding. New capital improvement projects will prioritize traffic safety and mobility, including high-visibility crosswalks, traffic signal synchronization in downtown, and implementation of the Active Transportation Plan. The department will also continue work on waste reduction, tree maintenance, and sewer infrastructure upgrades. The Public Works Department continues to serve with pride for the betterment of residents' health and safety.
All right. That was an intro for both our departments that address our citywide infrastructure needs, delving directly into, can we get back to the screen? I can click. Going directly into GWP, you'll notice that they have five sections. You see their staffing numbers on top. I'll note that there's, that number goes from 361 to 363. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we probably should be looking at adopted to proposed columns for a true depiction of where they were and where the department will be. Those two positions, we'll talk about in a second, but they are, well, I'll talk about it now. Those two positions are essentially new positions for the department based on regulatory compliance requirements. These are positions that we previously did not have to have, but based on new regulations, we do. One will be a communication, a cross-connection control technician, and another is a cross-connection control specialist. You'll see that under the proposed service level increases. A couple of other notable items for the department asking for appropriation on is going to be one supervisor for the electrical line mechanics and four electrical line mechanics. This essentially is positions, we're not asking for the actual headcounts for these positions, but it's the appropriation to be able to hire on an additional crew on the electrical line mechanic series. And then you'll notice that this department doesn't have any budget balancing strategies because it does not have any impact on the city's general fund, and that's where our $34 million deficit is. So there was no sense in going deep and starting to cut in that department unless we found opportunities for savings for other reasons. In the interest of time, I'll fly through some of these funds unless I'm directed to ignore them. But the Electric Works Revenue Fund, you see an $8 million, almost $8.7 million increase there. $2 million primarily attributed to salaries and benefits, and then that's where you see the five-member crew being allocated to, hence the increase. On the Electric Customer Capital, $4 million, that is money actually coming in. So we're asking for a new appropriation, but that's because we know that with the BRT project, that there is going to be quite a bit of work that GWP will have to do to support the implementation of that project. And the customer, in this case Metro, will essentially be paying for those improvements to the tune of about $4 million. Water Works Revenue Fund, you see an increase of about $3.7 million. That's essentially the cross-connection positions that I referred to that were regulatory, about $1 million in contractual services and $1 million in interest debt on the bonds. And then on the final one, the Water Depreciation Fund, you'll see a pretty significant decrease of $14 million. Of note there is that that essentially represents $13.8 million in project appropriations being taken out. The reason being that the Water Department is essentially going through a water master plan as we speak. Once we have that plan complete, we'll have a better sense for where the department is, which projects need to happen, and we'll ask for future appropriations in future years. The amount of money that we have sitting in that fund currently is essentially the minimum amount that we need to perform work in the '25, '26 fiscal year. Public Works, seven different sections. And again, you'll notice here of note is a pretty significant decrease in personnel. Public Works is the largest department that shares a pot of the General Fund money. So when it came down to coming up with budget balancing strategies, whether we were asking the departments to go back and look at opportunities or said, go back and look for a 5%, 6%, whatever that percentage cut was, the proportionate share of Public Works is essentially larger. In other words, the capacity for reductions, proposed reductions were greater. So they essentially go from 284 positions down to 269 positions. Couple of areas here where you see service level increases, the School Crossing Guard Program. Yes?
Sorry, 284 to what?
Upper right-hand column, first column, upper right-hand table. Compare the first column, adopted '24, '25, to the proposed '25, '26, which is the last column. And I'll talk about what some of those positions are in a sec. On the proposed service level increases, there's another $123,000 increase to the Crossing Guard Program. This is on top of the existing appropriations that we have for that program on an annual basis. This is a program that the city funds entirely on our own for the school district. I believe the 123 gets us above $800,000 a year. Looking at Public Works, I got a head knot. So yes, that program essentially is costing about $800,000 a year. And then there's an extra $680,000 in new appropriation request for the AB 645 Speed Camera Program implementation. In terms of proposed budget balancing strategies that the department put forward, you see a number of different positions here that were all vacant at the time that we were looking to, you know, bring these costs down. Some of the positions were, couldn't be entirely eliminated, but what we did was we essentially converted a portion of that cost into hourly wages. For example, a custodial worker in one of the instances, I believe, was converted to hourly wages to be able to do the work, not on a full-time basis, but help fill the gap. And then there was another position, it was the...
Traffic Engineering Associate.
The Traffic Engineering Associate that we converted to hourly wages to manage the Speed Safety Program. The reason being, the Speed Safety Program is a pilot project. You wouldn't want to put a classified employee in that position if the program eventually goes away with an hourly employee. If the program goes away, that position could either be repurposed somewhere else or eliminated altogether without a layoff. I promise you, this slide's going to be a little bit different. You see on this screen the extended cuts to their Maintenance and Operations Section. You see quite a bit happening here. A couple of things to note, I won't go through each one. Forestry Maintenance and Planting at Citywide Parkways, we proposed a reduction of $224,000. That does not eliminate the program. What that does is change us from a six-to-a-seven-year cycle in the Maintenance District, only for one year, however. Granted, this is a one-time savings, not a long-term solution. Similar with the maintenance of the cable barriers for Montrose Farmer's Market. It's not an entire elimination of that. It's just what we feel we could absorb in this particular fiscal year and give up to help balance this year's budget. And then the flat stipend of $150,000. As one of our largest departments, the Public Works Department does have quite a number of funds. It's actually two pages of funds. Again, there's a lot here. I'm not going to go through all of this. I'm going to fly through it and allow time for questions and answers. On the General Fund side, you see an increase of about $8.4 million. Two and a half of that is attributable to salaries and benefits, directly associated with the shifting of the Parking Fund into the General Fund. Then there's also an increase of about $4.2 million on the MNO piece. Again, it's shifting the Parking Fund to the General Fund. We also see an increase of the $680,000 for this AB 645 under the MNO piece here. Under the Parking Fund, you see a reduction of $17.3 million. I've said this over and over again, this is where the proof is in the pudding. You see that we're essentially decreasing that fund in its entirety, and that 17.3 is essentially split between Public Works and GWP, I'm sorry, Public Works and Police. Measure R Local Return Fund, a reduction of $5.9 million. That's essentially a decrease in CIP projects compared to the previous year. The next one, Measure R Regional Return, there, that's $5 million increase, directly tied back to two specific projects. The first is the Locker Center Avenue Rehab Project in the amount of $3 million. The next is the Downtown Glendale Traffic Signal Synchronization Project for $2 million. And then the Transit Prop C Local Fund, you see an increase of about $1.4 million, $1.37 actually. And that's essentially new contractual services for the Larry Zarian Transportation Center Upgrade Project. Almost done here with Public Works. Touching on a few more projects here, we, a question came up with respect to the Capital Improvement Fund. Again, we're going to get into great detail on the Capital Improvement Fund, Fund 4010 next week, but you see a reduction of $760,000 in this particular proposed fiscal year for '25, '26. Some of the projects that were deferred for, until '26, '27, will consist of our pavement condition improvement efforts and the Heat Island Effect mitigation improvement. It doesn't mean that we're not moving forward with some projects. What we are moving forward with is ADA facility improvements, which is something we do on an ongoing basis. Community Development Department's Tenant Improvement Project, that's been in the works for a couple of years. Active Transportation Implementation Projects, that's about $1 million there. High-visibility crosswalks, Civic Center Fleet Garage restroom improvements, that's down at the yard, and the corporate yard renovation, again, at the Public Works Yard. There's a couple of projects that shifted from the Parking Fund into Fund 4010, General Fund CIP. That's basically from the parking, when the Parking Fund collapsed, we moved over the parking lot improvement efforts and the parking structure improvements, about $1.3 million there. State Gas Tax, an increase of about $1.5 million. That's specifically related to as-needed engineering services, about $1.5 million there. Street tree maintenance, about $660,000. Some capital improvement project support, our fiber optic services and traffic engineering services. The CIP Reimbursement Fund, $17 million reduction, that's pretty notable. What that's essentially, the backstory there is, that was a one-time grant that we received for the electrification down at the Beeline Bus Facility. We are not, that's not a grant that you get on an annual basis. We still have funds in that project that'll carry over until that project's done. But because we don't have a new appropriation request, you see that the full $17 million shows up as a negative. Some of this is kind of counterintuitive. Finally, the Sewer Fund, that's a pretty significant increase of $5.6 million. Touching very briefly on what's driving some of that, you have about $19 million associated with the Lag Warp, the L.A. Glendale Water Reclamation Plant Project, Hyperion Wastewater System, and wastewater capacity improvements. There were also some decreases there, which amount to about 5.6. I can stop there and allow time for some questions.
I have a question, John. The Measure R Local Return Fund decrease was due to what? Page 24?
Yeah. Measure R Local Return?
Yeah. I didn't catch what you had said.
We had a $1.3 million decrease in capital outlay and a $5 million decrease in CIP projects compared to the previous year. However, I would ask that the department provide the specific details of which projects those were.
I'm not sure I need that.
What's that?
I'm not sure I need that at this point. The other question, I mean, you can follow up with me offline. The reimbursement, you said, from Metro for our BRT, is contingent on us signing the Master Cooperative Agreement. Just so we know that. They're just not giving that to us. We've got to come to an agreement with them and...
That is correct.
And as a result of that agreement, one of their obligations is to backfill and pay for our expenses in relocating utilities or curb cutting or whatever is necessary.
Correct.
And the decrease of the total workforce in Public Works is mainly due to taking the parking employees out. Is that right?
There is certainly a component of that. I believe it was 10 and a half positions that shifted over to the Police Department, but the department was, did also give up a number of positions. So you will see here...
I mean, they didn't give up?
What they have essentially given up is all the positions here on the lower right-hand column, civil engineer, maintenance worker, traffic engineering associate, which we talked about.
Those are the reductions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't have questions. Mr. Carpaccia?
Page 21, I think I asked this question, maybe I answered it, but Water Depreciation Fund, $14 million almost?
Let me see. Yes, I think, I believe I did answer... Yes, I think, I believe I did answer that. And I believe that was because they were going through the water master plan. I'm just pulling up that specific fund. Right, so the department had a number of projects that were, that need to get done. But because they're going through a water master planning effort right now, they've essentially put those on hold. They're going to revisit that when the water master plan is complete. So we'll be back in front of council with a list of projects necessary for those improvements at a much later date. Whatever funding that they have left over is going to, there's two things that'll happen. One, it'll sit in fund balance. And number two, they are going to move forward with a contingent of projects that are necessary at the minimal level to maintain the water system.
Page 23, holiday flag installation and removal, 45. Is this going away for this year?
This would be essentially, yes. As a proposed removal, it would be a $45,000 savings by not erecting and then removing flags. And I recognize that you're seeing some things here that are very unpopular. That's not necessarily by design, it's out of necessity. When the vast majority of the general fund is comprised of salaries and you're looking for, and you're looking for MNO savings essentially to help bridge a gap without touching employees, these are the unpopular things that essentially you're cutting into.
And this is when, during like?
Memorial Day, I believe, 4th of July.
4th of July, like Christmas time, is that?
It's any time, I don't know the exact holidays that we put it up and take it down, but it's essentially any time that you see the American flags posted on the flags.
I think we need to revisit that and this is, this is something that I have a problem. It's not a big dollar amount in general, but it's effective, it's just, you know.
Yeah.
And page 24, the Measure R Local Return Funds, that $5 million for Locker Center Avenue, is this the project that we are currently, we have in process?
It is.
That it's in the works?
It is.
Page 25, state gas tax, $1.1 million increase, is this the, is this the 3.5 million dollars that we get back from the state from the gas tax? Is that what this is?
Correct.
And we use that to build the roads and capital improvements for the roads?
That is correct.
Okay. And line 49, the CIP reimbursement fund for fleet electrification, is this, that $17 million was clearly earmarked towards that project?
It was.
It was, okay. And one last question about page 22, the balancing strategies. This is just a question, I just want to understand. The street crew supervisor, $175,000, I know we are not eliminating, but we are not doing it this year. But what kind of a qualification do they have? What kind of projects do they supervise? Is it like large projects, like Locker Center Avenue projects? Or what is it that $175,000 is, it's a big, good number, I mean, in general. So I wanted to know, what is the qualification for that job?
Councilmember Karpetsian, this position or similar positions do not supervise or manage large-scale capital improvement projects. For those, we hire construction management companies. But these positions primarily supervise the crews that work on pothole repairs, small concrete repairs around the city. We have crews that perform that repair and this position supervises that crew. If you're interested, you will qualify.
No, don't start a rumor. I have enough.
Plus, we have revolving door policy.
One last question, the school crossing guard program. It's, you mentioned it's about $800,000 a year, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Around there. I don't know the exact number. We can get the exact number, but it's about that amount. Shall we go on?
No, I have questions, yeah. I'm going to ask a couple overarching questions on the budget. Because I think, I was asking details for some of the programs. And I raised this during the briefing that we had about cushions. I recognize that there needs to be like safety measures put into each of the projects and programs. But is there a, you know, I don't know, you can't go more than 2% or 3% or 5% for program cushioning or safety, right? So as an example, if a project or a program costs, it's been the case that it's costs, say, $45,000 a year, right? But we've always budgeted for $60,000 or $70,000, right? So these are, if you take all of the programs and projects and you start adding them, that's a lot of money that we're basically going to, and we know that we're going to roll over. So is there any measures put in place from finance or from any of the departments on how much of a cushion you can put for programs and projects? And the reason I ask that is, for example, the $45,000 for the flags is something that stands out? I mean, that's a lot of money. I'm interested to see, was it, have we been spending $45,000 a year? Or is there a safety net that you're putting in for each of these programs that you've kind of carried over? Is that clear?
Yeah, Councilmember Satrian, if I understand your question correctly, certain projects and programs, let's say, construction contracts, we have to incorporate a contingency amount for unforeseen conditions. So that's where you see the 5%, 10%. Sometimes depending on the complexity of the project, could go up maybe 15%, right? Those we cannot do, well, I guess we could do away with them. However, that means every time during a construction project, the contractor comes across an unforeseen condition, the work has to stop. Then we have to bring a report to council and get approval and then go back and allow them to take care of that unforeseen condition. So those are all industry standard baked in. We have to have that cushion, if you will. The $45,000 or programs like that, those are based on historical data, what staff or the crews or teams have spent on that program.
Have spent or what we've allocated. So we've just kind of riled over because it's a carryover budget, right? So those are, for me, two different things. If we actually looked and in the last five years, we've noticed that we've only been spending, say, $20,000, right? I would, you know, you may have it as $45,000. What could end up being is that we save that program and we have room to save another program because the cushions aren't.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree. And I understand what you're, I understand the context of your question. Couple of things going on here. Typically speaking, every department budgets or prepares their own budget. And their budgets are prepared, which should be prepared, based on what their actual expenditures in the past have been, what their anticipated expenditures are. So in this particular case, it would be fairly easy to go back and identify this particular program. How much is it to purchase the flags? How much is the contract to actually go and install the flags and then remove them? And based on that, they come up with their $45,000. To answer your specific question, however, what you're describing is an entirely different way of budgeting, which some agencies do, and that's called a program budget. You essentially establish the different programs within a department and you allocate a specific set of funding associated with it. That way, the budget team at the end of the year or the department at their own free will can go and look at that particular program and say, there was specifically $45,000 set aside for the flag program? Let me do an actual transaction detail and compare my budget to my actuals. That's how we would be able to determine whether or not the department is fully utilizing the program funds. And if they wanted to transfer funds at that point, they would actually have to seek approval from the city manager's office through a specific forum to transfer. So there's a check and balance in place. Right now, the funds essentially are just allocated under MNO, they under contractual services, and it's really left up to the department to figure out. Before I go any further, and not forget, I did misspeak. The crossing guard program was confirmed $675,000, not $800.
$675,000?
Yes.
So we don't have, sorry, so we don't have the, that way of budgeting for programming? Is that why when I ask like how much a certain program or event costs, you know, it takes a while for you guys to get the info from each of the departments? It's not how centrally in your accounting system?
That is part of the issue.
And currently, I would add that the way we are preparing the budget is we, that's one of the exercises we go through with the departments. When they make a request as to certain amount of funding they need for a program that is recurring, we go through the exercise, well, this is good, but how much have you spent on average over the last few years? And that's how much we budget.
It's not an all or nothing for us, and I'll just say this and maybe leave it at that. We do have some departments that do utilize a component of program budgeting. Parks, libraries, and police, if I'm not mistaken, do utilize it just based on the structure of their operations. But unless you have, you know, a program-based type operation, like, I don't know, maybe think of the city manager's office, right? You would only have just one program, Sister City Program. You really wouldn't be able to break down the things that we do into individual programs, which is why we sort of run a hybrid across the organization. Is there room to maybe look at this a little bit differently and expand it across the organization? I think there is. I'll leave that to the permanent finance director, once they're on board.
If, Mr. Hernandez, can you speak to the forestry maintenance 24K cut?
So are you talking about the MNO cut or the staffing for the maintenance worker?
Forestry maintenance and planning at citywide parkways.
So as indicated by our Assistant City Manager, there would be obviously an impact. We, it would have to push back our established trimming cycle of six years. So we're, right now, we estimated the impact would be about approximately a year. So as, obviously, the financial situation could get better, we can reinvest and potentially get back on that six-year cycle. But right now, as it stands, we project a one-year impact in terms of delayiness, delayiness on that cycle.
Is that going to have a longer-term impact?
Potentially, but like I mentioned, that ultimately, you know, as this financial situation improves, we can look at other means to fund that. We also fund that through some of our gas tax funds. So if we can find other means to supplement this, this is the cut from the general fund. But if it continues, then it could potentially delay it further. But our, obviously, our goal is to reinvest back into this as the financial situation gets better.
Okay, and then the AB 645, $680,000. I know that that was part of the requests that went for funding from federal, federal and state agencies. How would the budget align if we ended up getting the funding?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't use that portion of the general fund.
So what would happen to that amount? So say we get the funding, the $680,000, right? We've currently allocated from our general fund. We get it from elsewhere.
We would deappropriate it.
To?
Back to the general fund reserve.
It will remain in the general fund.
Okay.
Typically, doesn't happen that way. But, you know, hopefully, we get lucky this time and it does. But if we did receive it sometime between here and the first quarter budget update, which happened, which we bring to council sometime in December, it will be at that time that we would ask for a deappropriation of those funds, potentially. But the reality is, a lot of these grants are on a reimbursement basis anyway. So if in fact it is on a reimbursement basis, we would still need the appropriation in the budget. And then we would charge against the grant. The grant would reimburse the general fund back. One way or another, it balances out. It's just, at what point does it happen, under what mechanism?
Okay, and then the school crossing guard program actually reminded me of our conversations last year with GUSD for the school resource officers. I think one of the things that I would love for us to take a look at is having conversations with GUSD. I recognize that we're the ones that are covering it 100% right now. And there are other cities that have different models where it's a shared cost. I want to make sure that we are providing the school resource officers, but this has to be a partnership. It seems like we're all in the same boat financially. And, you know, if we're talking about cutting even small programs that are worth $45,000, then it's worth having a serious conversation with our partners on how we're looking to do this together. So I think, I think that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brotman?
Yes, Public Works. So let me just reiterate, the same thing, I have the same feeling on the crossing guard program. You know, we contribute, I guess we cover all the costs. Does the district pay anything? Zero. Zero. I think we should really push back. I mean, you know, there are a lot of things we've been asking them and I, you know, I hate to sound like a jerk, but I mean, we've been asking them about, you know, joint use agreements. We've been asking them to participate in the Go Pass program, which would, you know, really, really cheap and subsidized and they're just not willing to do it. I think we need to go back to them and say, we need better cooperation both ways on whatever it is and not just suck up all these costs unless we're getting something back like joint use or some of these things we've been asking for for years. So I just want to reiterate that. And then on slide 23, some of the things here, that forestry maintenance and planting, I'm really not happy with that. I'm really opposed to that because, you know, best practice is six years. During the financial crisis, we went to nine years and we lost a lot of trees. We lost 10% of our canopy. Maybe not entirely because of that, but, you know, we lost 10% of our tree canopy because we pulled back the maintenance. And this is, I think, just a short-term solution, which is going to cost us more in the long run because we'll lose trees and we'll have to make them back up and it'll cost more later. So I really don't want, this is the kind of hollowing out of infrastructure maintenance that I think we really can't do because it's going to cost us more in the long run. It's very short-sighted. The other thing, I want to know what, you know, I know we're deferring like high-visibility crosswalks. What, you know, that, that also really concerns me because that's, that is a pedestrian safety question. And we're going to talk about Vision Zero later today. And high-visibility crosswalks really do make a difference. They could save a life. I don't think, I want to find other cuts. I don't know what, what do you, maybe you can talk about what the actual impact of that would be.
So ultimately, it's the number of locations that we can ultimately address. But, you know, staff is committed to obviously trying to secure additional funding, whether it be through grants as part of our existing projects, to try to supplement some of that, some of these locations. But ultimately, to your point, there would be a reduction in locations that we can actually accomplish with the proposed cut.
Yeah, I really, things that are going to be, you know, that are pedestrian safety, which is a high priority for us, I think we need to look elsewhere.
I just want to correct one thing or clarify one thing. High-visibility crosswalks and the list of new projects that I listed are not cuts. Those remain in the budget. They were just highlights of, we're cutting things like
Oh, I thought you were listing those as what the CIP?
No, we were cutting things like pavement condition improvement and heat island effect mitigation improvement. But we were still maintaining some sort of a balance. So things like ADA facility modifications would go forward, community development tenant improvement would go forward, high-visibility crosswalk upgrades would continue to go forward.
Okay. What does it mean, the heat island improvements? What is that?
So those as more green space, reflective materials, cool pavement?
Okay. But that'll be for one year?
At this point, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, at least it's not infrastructure that we're not, we're deferring and it costs us more later. It's just
It will be for one year, Councilmember Brotman, but considering the fact that
I don't like it, but I, but it's not the same as, yeah, it's like what we're doing with the tree maintenance. Okay.
I'll say that unless we fix our issue moving forward, we'll just be revisiting these items year after year after year.
The pavement condition also bothers me, like the high-visibility crosswalk. It's another one of these things where delays cost us more in the long term.
Understood, Councilmember Brotman, but you all have remembered the five-year forecast. So unless we have a significant infusion of new revenue, some things have to give.
I know, but that's going to cost us more within this five-year period. It doesn't help with our five-year forecast, it just makes it worse.
I get it, but again, unless we have significant revenue source that we haven't had previously, we have, we are scraping the bottom of the barrel. This is belt tightening.
I think it's the wrong belt tightening. I think we need to find something else. I mean, just anything that's going to cost us more the next year because we delay this I mean, just anything that's going to cost us more the next year because we delay this year is just not a good idea. It's not helping with our five-year forecast. It's hurting our five-year forecast.
And understood, but remember that, uh, 66% of our general fund is, um, police and fire personnel salaries. We can't cut those.
I know. Well, anyway, you heard me. I mean, we need to cut other projects. I just think that's really short-sighted. I'm done.
I'm, I'm just going to chime in on this because I said this during the last session. I said it was, this conversation was kind of built backwards where we're continuously talking about cuts to programs versus talking about revenue generation and financing. So I'm going to use this opportunity to request if we can have a specific session on just revenues and, uh, revenue opportunities. I know there's a bunch of things that you brought forth last time that had, you know, to be determined, um, as part of that. I want to, I want to know what financing opportunities there are for projects like the Arts Ahk beautification project. That's part of our budget right now. And while I recognize that you would have to put in the amounts until you get the revenue source, you know, these are things that have been sitting on the docket for a very long time. Um, and I think we do need to have a conversation around those as a council to be able to shift this conversation from here are all the cuts we're making to here are the things that we're committing to for revenue sources, for staff to go and work on and bring back for us to fix the financial situation that we're in. So, um, I know, you know, we, this is, this is not just a regular budget session. We're in a deficit and having only three or four budget sessions, I don't think is sufficient. I think we need to have more thorough conversations when we're talking about cuts and really looking at different revenue sources. And I would suggest that, you know, perhaps as we're going to go through at the end of some of the comments that we made, Mayor, I had brought this to your attention previously. I would like for us, if we have certain comments on things, for us to be able to, at the end, see where the three votes are or four votes are on each of these things. And so staff, you know, is not walking away from this budget session, uh, you know, not sure about what direction we're giving them. Because sometimes one council member, you know, I may say certain things, walk away from here thinking that, you know, since no one said anything, you know, it, it was an agreement. And then staff walks away thinking, well, you didn't get three votes for it or nobody else said anything. So, um, I would like to end that with that.
Mayor, if I, if I may, a couple of, a couple of comments. Regarding revenue, list of potential revenue sources that we had brought forth for council's consideration during the budget study sessions last year, there were less than a dozen. Majority, vast majority of them did not get unanimous support. We will bring those back again, uh, for consideration at a budget study session. But again, unless these revenues are guaranteed, as you see, we cannot budget it that way. We had a meeting with a number of department heads and I-Bank yesterday. So there's a potential, uh, for borrowing money, borrowing money that we have to pay back with interest. So these are options that we're looking at. But again, we cannot budget for those revenues unless, uh, we've been successful in securing them.
I, I recognize that. I mean, that was part of my comments. But, um, having a, you know, three-minute overview discussion like we did last time on just revenues, I think doesn't work for me. I want to be able to dive into the conversations. And instead of seeing to be determined, uh, I want to see some estimates of numbers very similar to what you had for suggestions for taxes, which I've been adamantly against. As an example, I'm going to point to, you know, PD, we're looking at $658,000 of cuts for four positions. I want to be able to say, okay, well, how much would we make from having a public safety development fee? And does that cover the, the cuts that we're looking to make? Uh, we were talking about billboards. Uh, there's been several proposals that have been, you know, shared with staff that would all generate revenue. So these are the discussions I really, really want us to have.
And again, I agree, and we will have those discussions. As far as public safety impact fee, the short answer is no, it's not going to cover based on what we have seen in other jurisdictions. Uh, we will have those conversations, but I'm, I'm repeating myself. Unless it's a guaranteed revenue source, we cannot budget and say, well, this is potential, so don't go ahead, move forward with cutting these positions right now.
Or we have a reserve fund that we can work through, or we can look at financing as we're going through that process.
And we will look at financing and we do have a reserve fund. We will share again the five-year forecast. And in order to be able to, after all these cuts, we still have to tap into our, a fund balance by $13 million for '25, '26, most definitely. But the forecast for the outer years is pretty good. You've seen that. We are going to, uh, be faced with below-the-floor policy that's set by council for the reserve fund. Unless we have, again, revenue source that is continuous and not one-time.
Mr. Carpetian?
Yeah, uh, I, I, I think we can't live on borrowed money, that's for sure. I mean, we can borrow money and then it doesn't go away. It stays here for, for a long, long time, the interest we pay on everything. I think, uh, I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Satchan made as far as new revenues or, what we need to do is for me, uh, I know we have that five-year forecast. I think you can, you can have a session after everything is said and done with the budget and say, look, for next five years, we need this, this amount of money every year to, not to tap into reserves too much, not to bring it down and lower it to 10% or what have you. I think we need to have, uh, a number and say, okay, for next five years, we need $5 million a year more, $10 million a year, whatever that number is. And based on that, we can, we can see how can we generate those funds and revenues, new revenues, to sleep at night, basically. Not to worry every, every day as to what, how, what's going to happen in three years or five years. Because it's not just this year. We can balance it off this year and have a balanced budget and tap into our reserves and move forward. But I think we need to have a little more solid number that each department, what do they need next, for next five years on a yearly basis? And how are we going to achieve this, uh, those goals and, and, and generate, generate revenues to, to have a balanced budget and, and move forward? Because it's not just, I don't want to, in 10 years, someone comes sitting in this seat and say, wow, these guys didn't do anything. They just borrowed money and I ended up with their, with their debt, more debt. So, uh, I think that will be helpful for all of us. And one, one last question. We, we replace all of our trash bins, right? Is it, was it because they were all, you know, old and, but, or it was, there was a SB mentioned, Senate Bill 13 you mentioned?
Yes, it's Senate Bill 1383. So it's a combination-
1383, okay.
A combination of both, the new requirement and also just replacing our old infrastructure.
How much did it cost us? About $90,000?
It's, it was split over three phases, but I, I'll get the exact overall total. But it was split into three phases over, uh, multiple years. I'll, I'll get the total.
Okay.
And none, and none of that was impacted the general fund?
No, that was all out of the refuse.
It was out of the refuse fund?
No, I understand. It, it's impacting somewhere, right? I mean, uh, I understand it's not general fund, it's the refuse fund. But if the refuse fund is impacted, we have to raise the, the fees in order to cover it. So we-
Sorry to interrupt. Apologies.
No worries. Go ahead.
But that, that was also built into our, our COSA in terms of our cost of service.
Right. I understand. I just want to know what the, what, what the total cost is. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, I just have two, maybe three brief comments. Number one, regarding the trees and the maintenance and the planting, please look at, uh, Metro Measure M, sub-regional highway improvement funds. Those, although the name says highway improvement, they are available for active transportation use, which is shade for pedestrians, if that connection can be made. You can see my, uh, I know you've been in touch with Vivian on a couple of issues, my staffer, and we'll see if that's available. Number two, listen, the only certain amount of fund that, clear money that we can pull out is increasing the transfer from the electric fund to the general fund. That can be done quickly, within the bounds of the COSA that we had set. I think we need to start seriously thinking about that and in terms of justifying it to the public. It's things that each one of you have said are so important that we shouldn't be giving up on. Police, uh, the maintenance, Mr. Brotman, that you had just, uh, and other things that you had talked about. So when do we talk about that? Is that in a future discussion?
We actually will have an opportunity in slide 47 later today. Hopefully we get to it.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, the third thing I want to say is I'm running on overtime right now. I'm going to try and stay another 15, 20 minutes. At that point, I'm going to turn it over to the pro tem, who I believe is Mr. Carpetian. And I will catch up on any other discussions privately with, with everyone. So carry on, John.
Very good. Next section that we'll hit is, we're more than halfway through, just so everyone knows. Uh, the last part will go rather quickly, I hope. Uh, the next section will be the quality of life departments. That'll be CDD, parks, libraries, and there's one more. If we can go to get that video going. Thank you.
The Community Development Department, CDD, provides planning services that shape the future of Glendale. From permitting and housing to economic development and long-range visioning, CDD ensures our community grows thoughtfully, safely, and inclusively. CDD is supported by multiple funds, including the general fund, Section 8, Home Grant Fund, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, Begin Home Ownership Fund, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Fund, Measure M Local Return Fund, Air Quality Improvement Fund, Grant Fund, the CIP Fund, and CIP Reimbursement Fund. This year, the department significantly reduced permitting and entitlement timelines, improving service delivery. CDD also advanced the Rock Haven project by completing the conceptual plan and initiating the bid process. In addition, code amendments were adopted for accessory dwelling units, the downtown-specific plan, and internal process improvements, ensuring more responsive and adaptable city planning. In the coming fiscal year, CDD will finalize updates to several key elements of the city's general plan, including land use, circulation, safety, and environmental justice. The department will also consolidate internal working groups to improve operational efficiency and enhance customer service delivery. Community development is laying the foundation for a more efficient and thriving Glendale. With updated policies, streamlined services, and a continued commitment to thoughtful growth, CDD is building a city that works for everyone, now and into the future. The Community Services and Parks Department, CSP, enhances quality of life through safe parks, preserved open spaces, and programs that support community well-being. CSP includes five sections: Recreation and Community Services, Human Services, Park Services and Planning, Workforce Development, Glendale Youth Alliance, and Administration. CSP is funded by a variety of sources, including the general fund, CDBG, Workforce Development Fund, Measure A&amp;H, Park Mitigation and Quimby Fees, and other grants. Recent highlights include the completion of the Emerald Isle Playground, Monarch Way Station, T-House Bridge renovation, and the Doctor's House Monument. Safety fencing was added at key sites. CSP secured $5.9 million for the Central Park Project and $850,000 for a Life Sciences Career Program. Two CDBG-funded capital projects were also completed. In the coming year, CSP will complete the Fremont Park Project, renovate Sports Complex Field Number Three, and finish turf installation at Pacific Edison. New projects include upgrades to four playgrounds and two additional sports fields. With improved parks, expanded programs, and strong partnerships, CSP is building a stronger community for today and tomorrow. Library Arts and Culture, LAC, operates eight locations and a bookmobile, providing access to physical and digital collections, gallery spaces, and programming for all ages. The department also supports the Arts and Culture Commission and manages the Urban Art Program and Fund, bringing public art to life throughout Glendale and helping position the city as a cultural destination. Funded by the general fund, urban art fund, library fund, and development impact fees, LAC supports operations, programs, and public art initiatives. In the past year, LAC served nearly 96,000 cardholders, welcomed over 600,000 in-person visits, and circulated nearly 900,000 items. The Central Library celebrated the grand opening of vibrant new youth spaces, including dedicated children's and teen areas and a state-of-the-art sound space for podcast and music production. The newly-launched bookmobile expanded outreach, delivering books, storytimes, and programming to parks and events citywide. LAC also partnered with JPL to present Glendale Worlds, an innovative exhibit managing art and science. This year, the department will install four new public art projects and complete key accessibility upgrades at Grandview Library. More than just books, library arts and culture enriches Glendale, fostering learning, creativity, and community connection.
All right, that was the introduction for our three departments that make up our community quality of life. Thank you. Starting off with community development, um, you'll notice again, seven different sections within that operation. They started off with about 134, 138 employees, down to 134 roughly, when you take into account the, the combination of full-time and hourly FTEs. On the proposed service leveling adjustments, there is a $100,000 ask for overtime for code enforcement efforts. Uh, that's been a priority of the city council over the last year or more. Therefore, it's showing up here as an ask to increase their budget. Uh, in terms of budget balancing strategies on the salary and, and benefits section, you see a number of vacant positions that, um, were put into that non-departmental fund and not, and unfunded. So we do maintain those FTEs. Uh, we, they just don't have any funding associated with them. Uh, with respect to that last bullet for hourly wages, while we got, while we were proposing getting rid of about $300,000 in hourly wages, the individuals who were filling those roles will be moving into the existing vacant full-time positions. So we're not actually losing bodies necessarily. Um, it's actually a good outcome for a couple of those employees. Uh, on the MNO side, there is a proposal to reduce the existing graffiti removal contract without significantly impacting our graffiti removal effort. There is a $30,000 proposed reduction related to the Small Business Seminar. Media Relations, the Evoque Magazine, uh, that we've seen out there would essentially be eliminated at savings of $36,000. And again, you see that flat stipend that departments were getting in previous years. In the interest of time, I'm just going to run over two or three of the funds. I think we've gotten used to the format. You can ask any questions of the department heads if necessary. On the general fund side of note, you'll see a reduction of about $400,000. Uh, what we see there is two things happening. Uh, we have our homeless section that's shifting from Community Services and Parks into Community Development Department. Uh, so you'll see a reduction there. But we're also seeing about $300,000 in reductions for those hourly positions that I referenced earlier. We also see a significant change based on the fact that, uh, the monthly housing subsidy program is coming to an end based on the, uh, the timeline that was set previously. Another significant area, Housing Assistance Fund. Uh, we're seeing an increase of about $2.8 million in that fund. That's directly attributed back to an increase, um, for direct assistance, both for our existing voucher holders as well as the portable voucher holders. There's been a substantial increase in payment standards and the per-cost unit. This doesn't necessarily mean that we'll be able to serve any additional vouchers. It's just essentially trying to keep up with the, with the vouchers we have now. Uh, and then perhaps another one to, to touch on, the air quality fund, that might be of interest. On the air quality fund, we see a decrease of $752,000 because there was a one-time appropriation for charging stations and e-bikes to prior year. Um, those funds are going back into the pot, but are being used for the purchase of, uh, 19 electric vehicle crossover, uh, crossover vehicles for our code enforcement employees, our CDD employees. Essentially, these are employees who presently utilize their own vehicles and get a monthly stipend for it. Uh, this would not only put them in an electric vehicle, but the stipend would essentially go away. Breathing through this, I'll move on to Community Services and Parks. Another area where you see a fairly significant reduction in the total number of positions within the department, you don't see it so much on the full-time side. you don't see it so much on the full-time side. You see that the full-time employee count goes from about a hundred and seven hundred and eight to about a one-on-one. You do see a significant reduction in the hourly FTEs. That was part of our budget balancing strategies, essentially removing some of the seasonal hourly employees without impacting programs too badly. In terms of proposed service level increases, the department's asking for a very nominal increase to their PlaySmart Lego Camp of thirteen thousand dollars as well as another ninety-five thousand dollars for the Fremont Park Building and Field Operations once the Fremont Park opens up and is in full swing. With respect to proposed budget cuts, salaries and benefits, you see there were three vacant positions that have been unfunded and put in that non-departmental as well as some reduction in hourly and overtime wages of nine thousand. On the M&amp;O side, some more obvious impacts. Reduction to summer camp security guard, extending the life of the existing biller tables down at the Adult Recreation Center, reducing our AV equipment repair budget for the Stone Barn, holiday tree lighting, not the tree lighting, the holiday lighting. Essentially, these are the lights that you see on the trees going down Brand Boulevard. Again, not a popular choice, but these are the level of cuts that departments have had left without going in and actually touching personnel or completely eliminating programs which by virtue will have an impact on personnel. Again, a couple of areas maybe to touch on. The Emergency Solution Grant Fund, you see a reduction of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That's because that fund is moving from parks to CDD, like we've mentioned before. Measure H funds, there's no appropriation for twenty-five, twenty-six for Measure H. That's because that program sunsetted in March of twenty-twenty-five. It's being replaced by Measure A. We have not set up that fund yet, and we're frankly trying to figure out exactly where that fund will be set up. It'll likely be in Community Development since the program has shifted there. But that'll come sometime mid-year when we're a little more clear on that. And then for capital improvement, you see a reduction of about one point three million dollars. What we've decreased is projects that got deferred over to twenty-six, twenty-seven. Verdugo Park South renovation, the Shoal Canyon Ball Field repaving of the parking lot, the Shoal Canyon Landfill Master Plan. That's essentially the master planning efforts that need to start to take place once Shoal Canyon Landfill closes, frankly, before Shoal Canyon Landfill closes because it'll take a long time to permit, and the Upper Shoal Canyon Demo and Renovation. We are moving forward with some projects, however. Sports Complex Field, four or five replacements at a rate of two million dollars. Emerald Isle Park's perimeter wall replacement because it is in poorer condition, and the Maple Park Gym ceiling replacement. All right. Again, moving forward, we'll go ahead and touch on library. Library has had a slight decrease in their overall employee count based on the proposed cuts of vacant positions. They started with about fifty, they're down to about forty-six. In terms of service level increases, hourly wages for the sound space is needed to essentially maintain and expand those hours slightly. Some additional hourly wages for the teen space, a very popular program at Central Library, and a community resource specialist contract for about thirty-five thousand dollars. They were able to give up four positions that were vacant. You'll see them in the left column under Proposed Budget Balancing Strategies. And under M&amp;O, you see a series of, you know, reductions that, again, are nominal, but essentially that's what's left in these departments. With this particular one, I'll just note that the replacement of the communication system, while it's being unfunded in library, that program is shifting over to the IT department. And then it'll just be charged back in two years once the cost allocation plan catches up. Much smaller budget, or a number of, I shouldn't say much smaller budget, much smaller number of actual funds. In the General Fund, you see a decrease of about three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, primarily being driven by a couple of hundred thousand dollars in library maintenance that were one-time in the previous year, not necessarily something that we needed to carry year over year. And then there was some proposed reductions, like we showed on the previous page, Be the Change Initiative, Community Relations, and the replacement of their communication system. In the Library Fund, that's where you see a reduction of three fifty-nine. That's essentially the defunding of the two librarian positions, but increasing about forty-nine thousand for hourlies as well as some reduction in digital resources and general supplies. That does it for our quality of life departments. We can open it up to questions at this point. After that, we'll be left with a couple of segments. It'll be our Central Support Departments, which I'll fly through, followed by our next steps, and then we have to get to the hearing for our vacancies.
Okay. Questions on these departments?
I think it would be worthwhile for us to just digest all of that and then come back to staff. There's a lot.
Let's be clear, we can ask questions at any subsequent budget session.
Mayor, we do have, we have reserved the last study session for follow-up. So between now and then, any questions that we get, we can address during that study session.
And let's be sure, colleagues, that if we do have a question that we formulated, to let you know ahead of time so you can get to the appropriate staff or data to answer.
That'd be great.
I was going to say that.
Couple of quick questions, yeah. Page twenty-six and page thirty. That flat stipend, what is it, what was it for in the past? Was it a hundred and fifty thousand?
Sure, what I mentioned earlier was because the last few years, all we did was carry over a budget. We weren't necessarily adding anything on the M&amp;O side. We essentially had made a decision not to really entertain service level increases as a standalone. As you'll see on the bottom left-hand side, service level increases. You haven't seen that in the last couple of years. Instead of doing that, what we said was, based on the size of your budget, we'll just give you a flat amount, and you figure out how much you can do with that amount. Because we're not, A, doing a carryover budget necessarily, we're actually doing a reduced budget proposal. But we didn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We said, we'll go ahead and entertain some service level adjustments, but in exchange for that, we're removing that flat stipend that we had just administratively put into your budgets.
Right, and on Measure H is sunsetting, as you mentioned, and it's page twenty-nine, and there's Measure A replacing it. So last, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we received five hundred sixty-four thousand from Measure H revenues?
That is what we appropriated. That's not necessarily what we had in the fund or what we received. That'll take us a second to look up in the backup documentation.
If I remember correctly, we contributed about ten million dollars a year in taxes. The sales tax was increased for Measure H. And if Measure A is replacing it, I think we need to see if we can negotiate to get more of those funds back instead of... I remember in few years back, we only got three hundred fifty thousand dollars out of that ten million dollars. So we paid ten million dollars in extra taxes, sales tax, and we get only three hundred, four hundred thousand back. So with Measure A, I don't know how it works, but I think we need to look into it to see if we can negotiate a higher number. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Thank you, well, let's move on then.
Let's go. Next is Central Support.
The City Attorney's Office provides a full range of in-house legal services to protect and advance the legal interests of the city of Glendale. From reviewing legislation and contracts and providing written legal opinions to defending the city in court and managing claims and insurance approvals, the department plays a vital role in ensuring compliance and upholding the rule of law across all municipal operations. The office is funded through the General Fund and the Liability Insurance Fund. This past year, the City Attorney's Office played a key role in supporting the Charter Review Committee. The office also contributed to quality of life initiatives by helping update the unlawful camping and sidewalk vending ordinances and related enforcement strategies. In the area of land use, the office coordinated with the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the city's Community Development Department to refine the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance, ensuring it reflects both state law and community priorities. On the litigation front, staff secured a major legal win in a high-stakes jury trial where the city prevailed with over twenty-two million dollars at stake. By combining legal guidance with defense of the city's interests, the City Attorney's Office continues to safeguard Glendale, support responsible governance, and ensure our community's laws reflect both legality and fairness. The Office of the City Clerk is a service department that provides records administration and transparency. It manages official records, facilitates public access to information, oversees elections, and supports the work of city council, boards, and commissions. The office is funded through the General Fund. The Clerk's Office responded to thousands of public inquiries by phone, email, and at the public counter. Over the past year, the department processed more than eighteen hundred public records requests and facilitated the reappointment of sixty-five commissioners across thirteen boards and commissions. The 2024 municipal election was successfully conducted in partnership with the Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder County Clerk, with turnout exceeding that of the previous cycle. The Clerk's Office also continued to provide leadership and staffing for the Commission on the Status of Women, which hosted several events. The Clerk's Office supported advocacy efforts for more inclusive demographic representation, specifically pushing for the inclusion of an Armenian subcategory checkbox within the MENA classification on the 2030 census, and working with the state legislature to ensure a more accurate count of Glendale residents in state demographic data. Looking ahead, the Clerk's Office is preparing for the 2026 municipal election, which will include three city council seats as well as elections for city clerk, city treasurer, three college board seats, and three school board seats. By supporting elections, maintaining legislative records, and empowering commissions and public access, the department ensures that Glendale's government remains open, informed, and connected. The City Treasurer's Office manages Glendale's banking relationships, oversees the investment portfolio, and serves as trustee for various city street improvement bonds. The City Treasurer's Office is funded through the General Fund. This past year, the Treasurer's Office ensured full compliance with the city's Payment Card Industry Data Security Standards, PCI DSS, strengthening the security of credit card transactions and protecting sensitive financial data. In the coming fiscal year, PCI DSS version four point oh will become fully mandatory. This update introduces enhanced safeguards against evolving cybersecurity threats, strengthens cardholder data protections, and promotes a more flexible, continuous approach to compliance. As financial systems grow more complex and digital threats evolve, the City Treasurer's Office remains committed to safeguarding Glendale's fiscal integrity. By strengthening compliance and protecting public funds, we're ensuring secure and effective financial operations citywide. The Finance Department provides fiscal oversight, prepares the citywide budget, and manages services including payroll, purchasing, accounts payable, accounting, revenue collection, and financial reporting. Finance is primarily funded through the General Fund. In the past year, Finance supported the negotiation and implementation of six labor agreements and issued over thirty-six thousand vendor checks. The department received the GFOA Award for its annual comprehensive financial report for the twenty-ninth consecutive year. Collaborating with HR and IT, Finance evaluated employee performance evaluation and training systems, explored automation for IT procurement and asset inventory, and expanded reporting tools. Significant progress was made in automating agency-required reports such as Transparent California and Gatsby One-O-One reporting. In the upcoming year, Finance will lead a major upgrade to the city's ERP system. New self-service portals for vendors and residents will streamline operations and improve transparency. The department will also implement modules for citywide fees and revenue contracts, eliminating manual processes and increasing integration with permitting and billing systems. Plans are underway to integrate financial reporting with Power BI, offering real-time interactive dashboards. Preparations will also begin for a full ERP upgrade in 2027. With a focus on modernization, transparency, and service, the Finance Department is helping Glendale make smarter financial decisions. The Information Technology Department's mission is to connect people, processes, and information through the secure use of technology while delivering outstanding customer service. The IT Department operates under two internal service funds, the Infrastructure Fund and the Applications Fund. Together, they promote centralized technology services to city departments with costs recovered through a service charge. Over the past year, IT completed major upgrades to the city's data center storage and GWP's hosting environment, along with enhanced firewalls. Public Wi-Fi was expanded to five new locations, and a secondary internet provider was added to strengthen connectivity. Advanced cybersecurity tools were deployed to improve email filtering and threat detection. IT also built the infrastructure and software foundation for the Police Department's new real-time intelligence center. Looking ahead, twenty million dollars is allocated to the Infrastructure Fund and sixteen point five million dollars to the Applications Fund to support key technology upgrades, including a citywide transition to Windows eleven, expanded public Wi-Fi, and the rollout of AI tools like Microsoft Copilot and an AI-powered website chatbot. Investments also include a new enterprise risk management system, an improved public records request platform, a nine-one-one call recording system, and upgrades to the Verdugo Fire Dispatch system. Roughly thirty percent of the Infrastructure Fund's operating budget is dedicated to cybersecurity, supporting advanced protections like next-gen firewalls, AI-driven threat detection, and multi-factor authentication to keep Glendale's systems secure. The IT Department remains committed to protecting the city through secure and customer-focused technology solutions. The Human Resources Department handles recruitment, employee wellness, safety, labor relations, and leave coordination. HR is supported by multiple funds. The General Fund, the Medical Insurance Fund for Employee Benefits, the Compensation Insurance Fund for Safety Programs, Health Services and Workers' Compensation, and the Vision Insurance Fund. This past year, HR launched NeoGov ATTRACT and onboard systems to modernize recruitment and streamline new employee onboarding. The department introduced the Glendale Excellence in Mastering Supervision GEMS Training Program and implemented paid bonding leave, giving employees six weeks of paid time off to bond with a new child. HR also led citywide workplace violence prevention training, hosted the inaugural Move to Win Walking Challenge, and transitioned employee benefits to lock-in rates for the next nineteen months. Notably, the city's turnover rate dropped to six point two six percent, down from double digits. Looking ahead, HR will lead a citywide update of class specifications and conduct a comprehensive compensation review covering approximately fourteen hundred positions. To further support employee development and performance management, additional NeoGov modules, Learn and Perform, will be launched. In the near future, HR will also introduce Tuesday Connect, a dedicated space for employees to share their workplace experiences, access communication tools that promote balance, foster personal and professional growth, and build resilience during challenging times. Human Resources remains committed to attracting, developing, and retaining exceptional talent by modernizing systems, enhancing benefits, and supporting employee growth. The Management Services Department provides strategic leadership and oversight across citywide operations. It manages a wide range of functions, including city council support, communications, graphic design, Glendale TV, audit, legislative affairs, sustainability, innovation, and inter-agency coordination, ensuring effective governance and responsive service. The department is funded by the General Fund and the Cable Access Fund, which supports Glendale TV programming and media services. Over the past year, Management Services conducted a comprehensive community satisfaction survey to inform service delivery, strengthen communications and outreach, centralized council support through a new ombudsman role, and reactivated the Sister City Program. In the year ahead, the department will implement a new strategic plan shaped by survey insights to better align city operations with community priorities and carry out special projects as determined by the city council.
That brings us to our final stretch of this. It is a lot, but I promise you this will go faster because these Central Support Departments only have one, maybe two, funds altogether, with the exception of Human Resources. We will start with... I'm going backwards, my apologies. There we go. We'll start with our City Attorney's Office. You'll see there was really no significant change in their full-time employees, maybe some changes in the hourly. The department has two central functions. And then there is a proposed service level increase for fifty thousand dollars to handle investigations that are shifting essentially from our Human Resources Department to the City Attorney's Office. We'll talk about that slightly more when we get to HR. In terms of budget balancing strategy... In terms of budget balancing strategies, there was no capacity, no vacant positions in the salaries and benefits side, but in terms of MNO, there was an opportunity to reduce some general council contract for forty thousand dollars and that flat stipend that we've talked about so many times in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Department has three primary funds: general fund, grant fund, library insurance fund...I'm sorry, liability insurance fund. I'll just focus on the grant fund and the liability insurance. Grant fund, you see a fifty thousand dollar reduction because that was a one-time grant that we received the year prior. It's not an annual grant, so we're not re-appropriating it. Whatever's left over in that grant essentially will carry over into the 2526 fiscal year as a revised budget. And then under liability insurance fund, you see a fairly significant increase of three-point-two million dollars. Two-point-six of that is specifically attributable to an increase is in our excess insurance premium, which has been an ongoing trend, not just with us, but in this particular sector altogether, but it has hit us quite strongly in terms of our budget impacts. City clerk's office is next. City clerk's office has five different sections they're responsible for. Again, you'll notice that with respect to the 2425 adopted budget compared to 2526 proposed budget, there was an overall increase of one position, one full-time position actually, and no changes to their hourly full-time equivalents. There were no proposed service level adjustments in the city clerk's office. There was one vacant administrative associate assistant position that was defunded and put into the non-departmental fund. There was actually two when we initially started, but one apparently had already been in process, therefore, since the job offer had been made, we didn't move forward with that for obvious reasons. On the maintenance and operations piece, the city clerk was able to identify about ten thousand dollars in her very small budget out of general supplies to help out, and of course, again, you see that flat stipend. Again, just one fund, hundred-and-eight-thousand-dollar increase primarily attributed to the addition of the records administrative analyst position that was authorized mid-year for the department, but that was also offset by about ninety-five thousand dollars when we removed the flat stipend and departmental reduction of about ten thousand dollars in general supplies. One thing to note here, though, the department was successful in getting a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant from Caruso and affiliated. Those funds are still intact for the Commission on the Status of Women and are obviously not going to be touched. City clerk's office, a very small operation...I'm sorry, city treasurer, it's getting late. City treasurer's office, another very small operation. They did acknowledge one full-time position addition throughout the year through our managed hiring process. No service level adjustments, frankly, they really don't have the capacity for any service level adjustments in that small budget, nor do they have the capacity for salaries and benefits. There were no vacant positions. All you see there is that flat stipend that was removed, and the department will just have to figure out how to manage with the budget that they have for the coming year. Again, they only have the one fund, really not much to talk about here. You see a thirty-three thousand dollar increase, some increases, some decreases, but that's just a normal growth within the operation. Finance, finance is a little bit of a unique one. There was a lot of shifts of positions in the finance operation throughout the year, but they're not reflected here just necessarily based on the timing of it. They actually got four positions, they gave up four positions out of managed hiring, then they gave up five positions that were all funded once the budget loaded, but you don't necessarily see this here. Ultimately, the department has lost five vacant positions: two accountants, one budget associate, one deputy director of finance, and one payroll specialist, three. Those were vacant, defunded in that non-departmental, as well as some hourly wages. Very nominal increase for the annual fee study. In the past, you've all been used to us doing a citywide fee study with all departments. That is an extremely difficult undertaking and extremely challenging for even this council to really dig in and understand what fees are being adjusted. So for the coming years, what I had suggested we do was break down our fee study and do it on an annual basis, but do it on a smaller subset of departments. Maybe pick a large department with two smaller departments and try to take bite-sized pieces out of it. That way, we have more time to actually spend with the consultant than the department, but much more time to be able to come and articulately have a conversation with council about some of the increases, the decreases, the reasons why, and such. On the MNO side, some decreases you see over there. Really nothing to note here. Again, similar to the city treasurer's office, you see a nominal increase of about fifty thousand dollars in their general fund. That's just some increases in COLA, some decreases in the other areas that we've already talked about. Information technology, you're not gonna...there's not much to talk about with IT because they're not in the general fund, they are a fund in and of themselves, broken down into both the application section and the infrastructure section. Because there was no impact to the general fund, there was no ask of that department to necessarily reduce anything. However, the department did voluntarily put up...put on hold, I should say, two vacant positions. Those positions are still funded in the department, they are maintained as vacant, and the commitment was that they would maintain those vacancies but backfill with an hourly until such time that we could figure out exactly how we're going to be moving forward. Understand that the relationship between the IT funds and the general fund isn't direct, but there is an indirect cost back to the general fund when we take into account our cost allocation strategies. That's why we're being somewhat sensitive with how we move forward with this particular fund.
That's a good question.
Sure? Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Galanian, for the...I know that for the finance director position, it's...I know you're still looking or you're interviewing folks.
I have a final interview in twenty minutes.
Okay, well, doesn't have to be six-five, doesn't have to have blue eyes or have a trust fund, but is what we have as an allocation for the finance director's salary comparable to what we're looking for in upping our finance directors and the kind of candidates we attract?
Councilor Satrian, we have set the range for that salary comparable to our market, and I do believe that we have attracted at least two or three highly qualified candidates that can manage this department moving forward and with the challenges that we are facing.
Okay, and if it doesn't pan out, you'll come back to us or you're gonna work through HR? Because you're getting rid of an assistant finance director position, I saw, right? So whoever's carrying that...
So once this position, this person is in position, they will go through and do an analysis of all the different positions and generate some suggestions as to potential restructuring.
And we're still maintaining one assistant director position, which is Shu Jun Lee. Just that we're gonna have to restructure the way that we manage that operation until such time that a reassessment is done. Moving on to human resources, and I promise I'm gonna be done in five minutes because this is gonna be quick. Not a whole lot of change there, one full-time position reduction. They take care of those five sections. There's no service level increases, and the department, based on the vacant positions, was able to give up those that you see on the screen here: admin assistant, an admin analyst, and a senior investigator, which is the piece that's being transferred over to the city attorney's office. So hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar savings here, but a fifty-thousand-dollar ask in the city attorney's office for the investigator, savings of about a hundred thousand dollars. On the MNO side, we talk about the savings there, the hundred thousand dollars shifting the investigations to city attorney, some reduction in leadership training funds, contractual services, and that flat stipend. Number of different funds here. The notable ones I'll just touch on here: compensated absences fund, one-point-one-million-dollar increase. That's essentially based on actuals. It's interesting how this fund is used when people accrue comp time, especially in the police department. We had to set up a long time ago a different way of paying out people's comp time based on grant requirements, so we apply that across the organization. What ends up happening is when people use comp time or are able to cash out comp time, it comes out of this pot. With the cost of living adjustments, that obviously has had an impact there, but I think that there's also a good news piece to this. There's another time where we mandatorily cash out people's comp time banks, and that's when they promote from a non-management employee to a management employee. Management employees don't get comp time or overtime. So I think this is also a reflection of advancement of our employees within the organization over the last twelve months, kind of a sense of health and opportunity and forward momentum in someone's career. Medical insurance fund is the other significant one I wanted to touch on. You see a four-point-one-million-dollar increase in the insurance fund. That is no secret. We've talked about the increase in medical costs year over year. We went and took a deep dive into our medical expenses, changed brokers, looked at other opportunities like CalPERS Medical, and ultimately were able to bring in rates that were even less than CalPERS Medical for the last two years. So at this point, what we're seeing, however, is a continued increase: one-and-a-half-million-dollar in our Kaiser premiums, about two-point-two-million-dollar in our PPO, and about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar in our HMO. This, for all intents and purposes, is a trend that we anticipate moving forward, not just here in Glendale, just across the board, which is essentially what you're hearing from all the consultants, whether it's our present ones, our past ones, or ones that you hear from different seminars you're at. And also of note is although we appropriate an additional two-point...um, four-point-one-million-dollar, we did maintain in our MOUs the fifty-fifty cost share of future premium increases with our employees, so half of that cost will come back to the city by way of cost sharing. And last but not least, management services. There's no proposed service level adjustments there. We were...we had one vacant legislative affairs and communications manager position that has been defunded and put in that non-departmental, as well as reducing half of the existing contract for our lobbyists. Two things there: our current lobbyist is on a month-to-month basis for the time being. We're going out there for a RFP coming up soon for those services. We have a very capable new employee who is seasoned in this particular arena, so she's been able to pick up some of that slack. At such point, in time where we determine that we're going to engage a new lobbyist at a higher rate than what we have budgeted, we'll come back and ask for the additional appropriations if appropriate. Translation services to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars has been reduced. That's partly in line with the fact that the city clerk's office has taken on that contract from previous carryover funds that we had authorized, and we have translators here at city council when necessary now, and then some additional flat stipend of a hundred thousand dollars. We have two funds in management services. It's our general fund, our cable access fund. Cable access is essentially the PEG fees. Those funds can only be used for capital, not for rent, not for employee salaries, so we have quite a balance in our capital...I'm sorry, in our PEG fund, cable access fund. Those were specifically the funds that went to go pay for the upgrades in this room, the electronics, and such. General fund, you see a reduction of about nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars. Two-hundred-and-eighty-two of that is decreases in salaries and benefits, and another six-fifty in MNO. That concludes our departmental presentations. When all is said and done, based on what we have proposed, what you see is that our proposed 2526 total employee count citywide would go from sixteen forty-four to sixteen fifty-one. Those are the five-member electric line mechanic crew and the two regulatory GWP employee positions that we're asking to add. Quite a stark difference from where we were about nine years ago in sixteen seventeen.
I'd like to ask questions.
Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. So thank you for that previous slide that shows what our workforce is, and going back to that, this is reflecting the periods following the now infamous reduction of about twenty percent in city staffing, correct?
Correct. It was about twenty-five percent of city staffing previous to the fifteen eighty-four.
Okay. Since this period, since the 2016, 2017 fiscal year to the current one, what has been the increase? What were our total salaries we were paying out to the one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four full-time employees, and what is that amount today to the one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-one?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't speak to that.
I don't expect you to now, but I'd like to have that answer.
Yeah, it's in the budget book as the total appropriations for salaries and benefits in the sixteen-seventeen year. I don't even want to venture a guess, but it's increased.
I'm sure it has. I just want the specific numbers for that first year.
We will see if we can get that before the end of this presentation.
I think I have just general questions.
Mr. Dr. Lee, are you done with your presentation?
I am. I will just...I want to take a pause on this particular slide, but in the interest of time, I don't think we're going to be able to get to this today. We still have to get to the hearing that's been noticed for today. But at some point, we're gonna see council's direction on our next steps. What we've done today and in the previous meeting was gave you an overview last time we did this, and today we've delved into the details of what the proposed cuts actually are. In summary, we started with a thirty-four-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit. Based on the proposed cuts, we've brought that down to about thirteen-point-seven million, and at this point, we have a decision to make about how we're gonna move forward. There's a number of different options for the interest of...in the interest of time, I won't go into this, but we need some direction from council. Are we going to adopt with a thirteen-point-seven-million-dollar deficit? Are we gonna reduce the cuts and adopt with a larger deficit? Are you gonna direct us to go back and make additional cuts to further reduce that deficit? And there's a number of different variations. I know I've given you a lot of information today. We're not prepared to have that conversation, and there needs to be some digesting...digestion taking place.
And we also need the mayor participate in this.
So we can certainly bring this back at our next meeting on June fourth, prior to our last follow-up meeting. That way, if there's direction to go and make additional cuts or adjustments, it gives us a little bit of time to bring you something back before budget adoption.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, so. Councilor Satrian.
So how would you guys like us to do...are you okay with us scheduling meetings with each of the departments if we have specific questions? Because there was a lot provided, especially the last patch. I have...I think the, for example, the city attorney's office, when I look at the larger file that was provided, the general fund is broken down to, say, account one thousand and then one thousand one. Each of them has, say, like salaries and benefits, a maintenance and operation, and so forth. I have questions for all of these, like just trying to understand what's in them and why they're separated, but there's not enough time here, so...
I can answer the question for you in terms of how we should proceed. I mean, ultimately, the department has reports of the city manager, so from a policy perspective, I think he can have...he's gonna have to...
I think I'm not looking just for finance, right? Like, I'm trying to understand what's in the meat of them.
Yeah, we can certainly schedule those briefings if you have questions from individual departments, and we'll open it up to the rest of the council.
I would just ask that we include somebody from the finance department, because a lot of those funds that you're looking at, or those accounts that you're looking at, are nondiscretionary. The department themselves don't know what go into that. There's only a few of those line items that are discretionary under the MNO piece.
Yeah, once...when we schedule these meetings, we'll definitely include finance department.
Do each of the...do each of the departments have their own budget person, or is it through...
They have their budget liaison who work directly with the finance department.
Okay. All right, and I think so I'm gonna ask that last session as the follow-up session that we have, we definitely schedule something. There, the list of items that you had for...as part of revenues, I had noted last time, it's not a complete list. Some of the things that should also be on there are the digital billboards on public lands specifically to metro, not just city properties. There was a proposal some like year and a half ago that came for digital kiosks. The ICE Center, I checked, Pasadena has a one sheet, and they're generating a one-point-two-million-dollar revenue from that. And then I think the EV charges you already had. And then there was the concept of the restaurants and the parks. I think the rest of them you already had on your...on your list, as well as the public safety development fees that I've mentioned several times now.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
Are we good with that? Are we good with that additional...
If I have other comments, I'll give it to them.
Do you want to... Do you want to have the additional session or not? Or the follow-up session?
No, I think the next session we should cover it. That's what, that's what they're suggesting, right?
Right.
Ah, okay, all right, okay, okay.
Mr. Dr. Kalian, anything else?
Sure. We have 12 minutes from start to finish, I've been promised, so we might get you out of here four minutes late, if that's okay.
This is a public hearing, so we need to open.
I'll open the public hearing.
So, thank you. This presentation is in response to Assembly Bill 2561, which was enacted this past January 1st in California to promote transparency and accountability in public sector hiring and retention. Specifically, this legislation requires cities to report before budget adoption on their workforce vacancies, hiring activity, and retention efforts, ensuring that we're both responsive to internal operational needs and external public expectations. As of December 2024, the city of Glendale has 1,643 budgeted full-time salaried positions. At the end of each month, we track the average vacancy rate of 13.8%, with the highest month at 15.7% and the lowest at 11.6%. While a 13.8% vacancy rate is the equivalent of 226 positions, this vacancy rate is not uncommon for municipalities across the state. It does, however, signal the importance of continued recruitment efforts and investment in retaining and stabilizing our workforce. We are not alone in this experience. Many public sector employers are navigating similar challenges in recruitment and workforce sustainability. To clarify, reading from the top row from left to right, we are looking at the number of new vacancies created each month. While we ended the year at 11.6% vacancy rate, as of today, the vacancy rate is lower than that number. Last year in 2024, we filled 296 vacancies, a significant volume when you consider the effort and coordination involved with each hire. It breaks down in this way. 34 hires were from existing eligibility lists or continuous recruitments with an average hiring cycle of 126.7 days. 156 were from open or promotional recruitments, taking longer, at 164.2 days on average. And that does reflect the broader outreach and evaluation needed. And 106 came from promotional-only recruitments, which were the most efficient, ranging at a 77.4 days to fill. These figures help demonstrate both the demand for talent and the importance of streamlining our hiring processes without sacrificing quality. Like many municipalities, we are facing a changing labor market where candidates expect more than just a paycheck. Among the top challenges are market competitiveness, where we're competing not just with our neighboring cities, but also with the private sector. As was mentioned earlier, rising healthcare costs, which influence the total compensation decisions, and evolving candidate expectations, including flexible schedules and meaningful work. In response, the city of Glendale has taken proactive steps where the city has approved cost of living adjustments across all of our bargaining units, has increased the city's contributions to healthcare premiums, reduced out-of-pocket medical costs for employees, and, as was mentioned earlier, introduced new benefits like paid bonding leaves. These are tangible improvements designed to attract and retain talent. In terms of retention, we saw 236 new vacancies in 2024. What's behind those numbers are 23 positions came from newly budgeted roles, representing a 1.4% growth in staff. 100 were created through internal promotions, seven from internal transfers, meaning that 45% of all vacancies came from internal opportunities, a sign of positive career mobility within our organization. Separations included 24 retirements, seven involuntary separations, and 50 voluntary resignations. Our overall annual turnover rate stands at 4.9%, which is relatively healthy when compared with other cities of our size and complexity. When we look at vacancies by bargaining unit, one group stands out. It is the IBW. It is currently the only unit with a vacancy rate that is at or exceeding 20%. This warrants some special attention where HR and GWP are in very close dialogue and partnership, working to reduce those numbers. So we recognize that recruiting and retaining top talent is both a challenge and a responsibility. Through ongoing improvements in our recruitment timeline, benefit offerings, and workplace culture, we are committed to ensuring that the city of Glendale remains an employer of choice in the public sector. And that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to hear your thoughts or take any questions.
Any questions or comments?
When you say involuntary separate, people got fired?
Maybe they didn't pass promotion, or they were encouraged to make a different decision because they weren't meeting standards.
And voluntary would be like people retiring?
Retiring or making a decision to join another agency for their own personal reasons.
Ignition, basically.
Okay. Is this just a not in file, or what do we?
That's, that's the requirement of legislation.
Right, so we were required to invite all of our bargaining groups here to address the council if they so chose, so we could publicly speak on what the vacancies are and what our recruitment and retention efforts have been over the years. We invited all five groups. One asked to meet prior to this meeting, and we met and provided them with additional information. The other four said that they had no comments to make.
Okay, and we're not committing to any cuts or freezing or any of that, right? Like, this is just your report on recruitment and vacancies?
Yes, this is simply a report on what transpired in 2024. We're not committing to anything else.
Anything above and beyond what's been presented as part of the budget for 2526.
So the suggestions that you have as hiring freezes and stuff, when we approve this, we're basically approving that?
When you adopt a budget, unless there's a different alternative direction, yes.
Okay, explain this to me again.
So I'm required to report out before budget adoption. When the council adopts the budget, the council was adopting whatever they're approving within the budget. This report is required to be presented before you adopt a budget.
One doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the other. It's not a like-for-like relationship. What we have done so far is proposed a 2526 budget that helps bridge the gap by reducing the total number of positions or unfunding the total number of positions that we have. Council has not adopted that as of yet. If council decides to adopt the budget as it was presented with no changes, which I doubt, but if that's what council did, it's at that point in time that you essentially adopt a budget with the cuts. But if at our follow-up meeting or next week, there's direction not to move forward with any or all of the proposed reductions in staffing, then we would bring back a final budget during the budget hearing. That'll include all the positions funded. It'll make the gap of the budget deficit look larger. We'd use fund balance. But that means that all the positions would still be in the budget in their entirety like they were last year.
So Ms. Adams' report and presentation was based on the 2024 workforce, the current year. What we have proposed for hiring freeze is for next fiscal year. So come next year, this time, there will be a report on the 2025 vacancies and recruitment.
But you've had the hiring freeze now for a certain period, right?
Yeah.
Which is a '24 cycle.
No, the hiring freeze went into effect in April of 2025 this year. This report is through December 2024.
So if there were vacancies in 2024, and you're listing them, we approved this, we're agreeing that they're part of the, the ongoing vacancies? And that we're committing to that?
No, I'm simply required to let you know what happened in 2024. What happened in 2024 has already taken place, and I'm reported, required to report out on that. You're not approving anything for the future.
No way restrict what you can do when you adopt the budget. It's, it's a reporting informational tool for the council to have going into the budget season.
Okay, I, and I know that, so you've listed, for example, three execs, GPOA is 29, IBW 36. Do you have a list of all of those positions?
I have a list of the positions that were vacant at the end of the year on December 31st, 2024. I don't have that list with me, but I can certainly make sure that it gets to you.
Some of these vacancies could have been filled from January 1st until now. So this is, again, primarily a reporting requirement for one calendar year. We're not asking for any direction on this. It's a requirement of the legislation.
Can I get the, can I get the detailed report? And then if any have been filled, and I know that when I had asked for the cuts that we were making, you had noted that there may be additional ones that may be coming for the 202526. If there are any changes, I would like that as part of the.
I did mention to you that there may be additional cuts coming, but as of right now, as it's hit here today, I have no knowledge of any additional cuts. But yes, I will make sure that you get the data.
Okay, with all this questioning, I just wanted to say thank you. I know you've been working very hard on the recruitment, and we see it across the board. I hear from departments as well, so thank you for that.
Okay, do we have any speaker cards or callers on this item, since this is a public hearing?
We do not have any speakers on this item.
Okay, any of the department, members of the department, department heads, no comments from the staff? See none? Any, any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. Dr. Kalian, are you pretty much done for today?
I'm good if you are.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. What's next? A adjournment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
You're adjourned. Thank you so much.